I call the order, the Committee of the Whole Meeting for Tuesday, April 25th, 2023. First item is roll call.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado? Beck?
Here.
Connolly?
Here.
Chantet?
Here.
Solfa?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malay?
Here.
Ewer?
Here.
Zirone? And Vogelsinger? We have 11 out of 14.
Thank you. Second is a reminder to please speak directly into the microphone. We are recording for BATV. So I want to make sure we can hear you in loud and clear. Third item is items to be reviewed, added, or changed. Do we have anything to change?
We will not need an executive session this evening.
Moving on into item number four, that is matters from the public, if items are not on the agenda. Do we have anyone here to address anything for items that are not on the agenda?
Yes, Michelle Deray from the Community Garden.
Good evening, everybody. Hi, Mayor. How are you? Good. I'm Michelle. I run a nonprofit Glory Gardens. I started that in 2018. Underneath the umbrella of Glory Gardens, I manage and operate five gardens, and 90% of those gardens is donated to the food pantries in the surrounding area, including Marie Wilkinson and Aurora, the Interfaith Food Pantry here in Batavia, Salvation Army, and then I also, we have a program for food and underserved people at our church called Second Saturdays, where we also help donate produce to about 40 families through our church. We have relocated the Batavia Community Garden from our Hart Road location because we kind of ran out of room, and we want to implement more space for people to grow food because there's a lot of people in our community that have, they live in apartments, or they live in a shady environment where they can't grow a lot of food. So we are going from about 100 feet by 60 feet, that provided about 20 people's spots to grow their own food, to 100 feet by 100 feet garden that will offer over 50 spots for people to grow their own food. Although it is considered Batavia Community Garden, the reason I call it that is because I have dedicated over a fourth of that garden to go to the Batavia Interfaith Food Pantry. That new location is going to be on Butterfield, off of Butterfield Road. It's on the property that sits on 15 acres, Ginger Creek Church. It's, yeah, 15 acres there. It's 2850 Ginger Woods Parkway. They pretty much donated this plot for us to make this huge garden. So I've gotten a lot of the community involved. I have farmers in my family out in Hampshire. He actually came out and tilled that for us. So it's ready to go. We have a community event day. Batavia Rotary has set something up on their website for a community involvement day that we're going to help spread wood chips and get that garden up and running, at least by the middle of May, so people can plant their gardens. It will be provided with water without any complications this year, providing that the City of Aurora gives us a nice meter for the hydrant that's on our property. We have seven stock tanks, so there will be water provided throughout the whole season. Last year for the Batavia Community Garden, we donated over 937 pounds of food to the Batavia Interfaith Food Pantry. I would love to work with Eileen a little bit closer in putting in some infrastructure for composting. I do see some of our produce is in the dumpster, and it's because it spoils too quickly. I mean, we're picking food that's so ripe, it's got like a two-day shelf life. We don't, we don't grow food for shelf stability. We grow it for flavor because it's not something you can get in stores. So I want to work with her in working with some type of composting efforts because Ginger Creek has the space for it, and they have welcomed me to introduce that program through the church. The five gardens that I have is one at my house, which I process my own food and can for myself. Any extra goes to the Interfaith Food Pantry. Ginger Creek's garden, we gave over 1,700 pounds of food last year to the Marie Wilkinson Food Pantry. We have created a 100-foot by 70-foot pumpkin patch at Ginger Creek this past year also for the Marie Wilkinson Food Pantry because they do a fall harvest every year, and they were spending money on the pumpkins, and they said, why don't we grow them? Well, yeah, let's do that. So I've incorporated Mr. Kuiper from Kuiper Farms in this project, so he's really involved with helping us with the varieties of pumpkins we'll grow and giving us tips throughout the season on how to grow them properly. Then we won't have to spend money on pumpkins to give them to our community of underprivileged children. Batavia Community Garden, again, 937 pounds of food. And then pushing the envelope, that garden in Geneva on Avril Road over by Northern Illinois Food Bank, I have a 50 by 30 plot there. That's pretty much an overflow plot because we do get so many donations from greenhouses and nurseries that have seed starts, and when they don't sell all of their plants in their plant sale, they end up just kind of dumping them our way. And I can't kill a plant, so I just plant them in the ground and let it go. My ask of the city is just kind of to spread the word that the Community Garden is here, although Batavia Community Garden is now an Aurora address. It is right down the road on Butterfield. All the surrounding communities in that area are all Batavia school-based, as well as they all get our flyers and mailers for Batavia because they're considered halfway Batavia. What else? I think, yeah, that's it. We have, garden plots are the size of 10 by 30s, and we have 5 by 12s, and we have 10 by 15s. They're kind of the same size that we had before, but we'll be able to provide over 50 people with garden plots this year. And that's all I have. If anybody has any questions? Yes, Ms. Jen?
Hi. Will you have opportunities if somebody wants to come and volunteer at the gardens? Will you have some opportunities, or how do they contact you to volunteer?
Thank you. Great question. Batavia Community Garden is on Facebook. The messages from that Facebook page go directly to me, and we always take volunteers. Anybody to do heavy lifting, all the way up to groups of kids that want to stick their finger in the ground and grow green bean, I'm fine with that, too. I love to, I love the opportunity to educate, enlighten, and encourage people to grow food, their own food organically. Yes, sir.
You gave us a lot of good stats about everything you've done, and you kind of answered my question. So you have a Facebook page, people can find you. What is the name of it?
Batavia Community Garden.
And if people want a plot, they can just go on there?
Yeah.
Is there any other way to get information if they don't go on to Facebook? Not everybody's on Facebook.
I have a couple Facebook pages. Glory Gardens has a Facebook, that's my nonprofit. Also, Garden Jargon, that's my garden consultant business, because it's interesting. If you go on Google and you search for vegetable garden consultant, landscaping companies come up. And I just want to help people, show them how to put food in the ground. It's not difficult, and people don't think they have a green thumb, but God gave us two of them, and we can grow food with them. It's, so Garden Jargon is my consultant business, and I do take on clients, and even if it's a bucket garden in their backyard to a full-scale garden. I have a client on Kesslinger Pass Kuiper's farm. He just put 100 by 100-foot garden in his yard, and he's like, I don't know what I'm doing, teach me. So he found me through Garden Jargon. And then I found out that he actually owns Skyline Tree Service in St. Charles. So great connection to have.
I can echo what she teaches. She taught me about pruning my tomato plants, and that was one day out volunteering with her at the garden, absolute wealth of information and, you know, just take it in while working out there.
I enjoy educating myself through YouTube. I've educated myself to the point of I cut all cable cords. I don't watch TV. I watch YouTube. And I love the opportunity that I have and the opportunities that have presented themselves to me to be able to grow in five different gardens because I can actually grow methods differently in every garden and know what works best. And I will never tell a person to not grow something or don't do that that way. I will just share my experience and let them make the decision, because if they don't make a mistake, they won't know how to do it right the next time. Any further questions?
Let me ask you one. I've got a couple people talk to me about some non-using land that they own in Batavia.
Yes, sir.
And I'm wondering if I was to approach them and say, would you let us put a garden there? Could you physically move the Batavia Garden back to Batavia?
I would not want to. I mean, I could always incorporate another one, for sure. I mean...
You could put Batavia's name on that one real easily.
Absolutely, yes. And, and like I said, like I was, I was looking at property here in Batavia for the Batavia Community Garden, and I ran into a couple situations of people that had land. And when I, personally, myself, if I feel resistance at all in any type of opportunity, I step back and I pray about it. And I clearly had a situation where I was speaking to my pastor about something else for the garden that's already currently there, that grew that 1,700 pounds of food from Marie Wilkinson last year. And he said, well, why don't you just put the garden here? And I didn't even think about putting that garden there because it was an Aurora address. And I didn't want to because it was an Aurora address being named the Batavia Community Garden. But I'm a resident of Batavia, and I'm proud to be a Batavian. I'm on Wilson Street. I would like to have that Batavia Community Garden in my yard. But now I have two of the largest gardens that I have in my portfolio on one property. Thank you, because gas is expensive. So now I'm on, two of my largest gardens are on one property, which is fantastic. And I will still continue to have Batavians come over and volunteer in that garden only. The Ginger Creek Garden is completely separate from that, and I have volunteers for that one as well.
Are these Aurora properties, are any of them north of the Toll Road?
No. Oh, yes.
You say Ginger Creek?
Yes, on Butterfield Road. It's right off of Butterfield Road.
There's a lot of Batavia about that place because it's all in our school district.
Yes, absolutely.
So there is a Batavia connection.
And we have Ginger Woods over there. There's a Facebook page just for Ginger Woods community over there, and my girlfriend, who's my right-hand man in the garden, she has posted it in that Facebook page, and we've gotten three residents in that community already to be a part of our garden there.
And the pastor is also in Batavia, lives in Batavia's family.
So they've been very supportive as well.
The City of Aurora has 892 houses down there in that Kirk Road, Butterfield area that's all in the City of Aurora, but they're also all in the Batavia School District.
Yeah. I have posted about this garden on what's happening in Aurora and what's happening in Batavia very frequently, to the point of I think they're going to ban me from the website. I would, I would love to have another Batavia Community Garden. I wanted one on the west side, but like I said, in the property I was thinking about over there, I got some resistance, so I stepped back from that.
I'll keep my ears open because we do have some people we're talking to that want to do stuff, but maybe two or three years with a vacant piece of property.
Absolutely. I'd be happy to help in any way I can. I appreciate everybody's time. Thank you.
Anyone else needs to address? Moving on to item number five, which is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is Resolution 23-060R, authorizing execution of a professional service agreement with Pure Technologies U.S. Inc. for a three-year waterwork system valve exercising program. Resolution 23-61-R, authorizing execution of professional services agreement with Emmy Simpson Company, Inc. for a three-year waterwork system leak detection program. Resolution 23-57-R, approving plat of easement for 1001 North Red Ant Road, super fast tracking. Ordinance 23-13, an ordinance proposing establishment of SSA number 70. Resolution 23-62-R, approving resolution, accepting a plat of utility easement at 1335 Pine Street. Resolution 23-63-R, approving resolution, accepting plat of utility easement at 905 East Wilson Street. And ordinance 23-12, annexing and zoning part of Skyline Drive right-of-way. I would believe we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Chantet?
Hi.
Solfa?
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
Baron?
Hi.
Lehman?
Hi.
Ayazi?
Hi.
Malay?
Hi.
Ewer?
Hi.
Zirone? Vogelsinger?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Rosado? Beck?
Hi.
And Connolly?
Hi.
Motion carried 12 to 0.
Moving on to item number six, is a discussion regarding the Mahoney Creek Tributary Stormwater Improvement. For...
Good evening. Tonight, I have Logan Gilbertson with, from HR Green, who has, who was a design engineer for the engineering plans, and also met with the residents with Lauren Newman, Tim Grimm, and, yeah, it was the four of us out there on a blustery March afternoon. And he prepared a report based on the concerns of the residents. We heard each of them individually for a 20-minute time slot, and I'm going to turn it over to Logan. He can kind of give a mini presentation of that report, and then we can open it up for discussion.
Andrea and Logan, can you from Zoom share the presentation so that the people online can see it, too? And if you need help with that, I can...
Yeah, I think we can. Green, correct?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Right. Thank you. And thank you, Andrea, for the introduction. All right. So as discussed, we're going to be going over some findings of the Mahoney Creek Tributary Detention Basin that was constructed last year. So as a quick refresher, this is where the basin is located. It's right at the headwaters of the Mahoney Creek Tributary. There are actually two ponds that were constructed. The first one is on the east side of Kirk Road on Fermilab's property. There was an existing detention basin there, but this project expanded it. The other basin was constructed on city-owned property on the west side of Kirk Road, right at the dead end of Wintergreen Terrace. So the need for these ponds really was that Kirk Road, I'm sure many of you are familiar with it, it's four lanes wide, and from Pine Street to Wilson, much of the roadway drains down to the low spot where this pond was constructed. So prior to this basin being built, there was no stormwater detention for all the runoff coming off the roadway. So that was the, one of the primary drivers for this site having the basin constructed there. So give you a little bit of a background on here and really elaborate a little bit more as to why we're discussing it. So even further back, back in 2018, a conceptual study was done to come up with how these ponds could lay out and what the different results would mean for Mahoney Creek, Mahoney Creek's tributary, and the residents who live along it. So a couple years' worth of engineering, and last year, the basins were constructed. So these were stormwater basins. They actually reduced the peak runoff during a 100-year storm by 50%. So they are very effective at what they're doing. However, after construction was completed, there was input from residents regarding the visuals of Kirk Road. Trees were removed to construct the basin on the city's property on the west side of Kirk Road. So at the January 2023 meeting, the city was requested to reach out to HR Green again and go meet with our residents, which we, as Andrea discussed, met with six separate property owners. And we prepared a memorandum summarizing our findings. So one of the primary things that we heard from all six property owners, and frequently just had to do with visuals of Kirk Road and noise coming from the roadway. As you could imagine, many of these residents had a fairly wooded view of the road. Maybe you could see it in the winter and the summer. A lot of time, it was pretty well shielded from the trees. So noise and the view were the primary concerns. Now, I do want to bring it to your attention that when we constructed these basins, we knew that visuals were going to be something we wanted to address. So during our restoration, we installed 33 deciduous trees. All of these were chosen to be rather fast-growing large trees. Up on the screen here, the Hackberry Swamp White Oak and Sycamore. They're quick, they're large, and they thrive in a wet environment. Additionally, we took the soil that was excavated out and constructed berm along the west side. So this earthen berm was meant to kind of give our arboida, which are an evergreen, give them a starting point that was approximately six feet up off existing grade. On the north side, the additional soils were piled into a permanent stockpile. So this hill that was graded there is actually 17 feet high and also provides screening from the north side. However, trees, when they first go in, are small. The deciduous trees are about maybe eight to 10 feet tall. Their trunk is only two inch diameter. The evergreens are six feet, and if you're familiar with the green giant arboida, they grow extremely quick. They can actually do about three feet per year. However, as they grow, they grow from the top and then bush out as they come up. So one of the requests from the city was that we come up with ways that we could hear the residents' input and then take that and develop an exhibit of where we could install just more screening, more trees, and depict the residents' requests on one single exhibit. So this is it. It's included in the memorandum. And what this is, was taking the as-built survey of the basin and adding trees to it. So if you have this on your memorandum, you can see it a little bit more clearly. But the bright green on here, if you can see the mouse, these are proposed new arboida. So one of the things that we frequently heard was that we planted arboida on the berm, which is right along this side right here. And just so you know, north is up to your right. Many residents wanted more arboida right of way to give a little bit more, you know, starting point, a little bit more instant gratification. So our memorandum recommends planting more arboida, the evergreens, at the far north end and the far south end, as well as immediately at the end of Wintergreen here. Reason being is that at the north end and south end, they were planted in a single row rather than a staggered double row. So what we're doing there is just extending the double row all the way to the very ends. Planting them at the end of Wintergreen helps with their radius of the berm right there. You know, the grading was done so that in the future, Wintergreen could actually be converted from a hammerhead end to a cul-de-sac if the city ever chose. This was done so that in the future, if that ever happens, it's not a big deal to do a bunch of earthwork and tree removal. It's already set up for it. However, as you can imagine, the curvature there gives the appearance that they're farther apart, and we can fill that in with some additional trees there. Our second recommendation was that many residents offered to plant trees on their private property, but they did ask for some help from the city. So one of the things that was brought up during our meetings was that the city already has a 50/50 cost share for parkway trees. So it was discussed that this could be extended to the residents who live along this project, and the city could cover 50% of their cost of installing trees up to a certain amount. And then lastly, additional trees could be planted on the city's property, on the basin itself. So a lot of these may look like they are kind of sporadically placed around the pond, making sure that they weren't overplanting with the existing trees. But these were actually chosen to be in specific spots based on where individual residents pointed from their deck or their backyard, saying, I can see the roadway from this direction. We tried to pick a tree that would block that view specifically for individual residents, meanwhile trying to view a spot that two lines of sight would be crossed, and one tree would help multiple residents. The species that were recommended on here are red oak and river birch. These were picked because they're relatively quick-growing trees, but also the shape of them. They serve very well as a screening. And actually, the red oaks, many of the species in that family, they hold on to their leaves all winter, so they kind of act as an evergreen. They will tend to drop their leaves late in the spring. So all winter long, you would have some screening from that. All right. So our recommendations there in the memorandum are planting additional arboida. The ones shown on the exhibit show 18 of them, and assuming the same unit cost that the contractor charged to install them the first time, we have the city's share in the one column there, and then a residential share on the far right. Arboida have no residential cost to them. However, as I mentioned, we could do a 50/50 cost share on private property. So this is assuming 10 trees get installed. That number would obviously fluctuate depending on the level of interest from private property owners. But this is something I believe would need to be worked out between the city and individual private property owners. And lastly, for your consideration, is adding more trees on the city's property. The exhibit has 20 different trees placed specifically to help block the roadway, and at the unit cost that they were originally installed at, it would be about approximately $16,800. So if the city were to pursue all of the plantings shown on the exhibit, the total cost would be $26,835. That I can open up for questions.
This is actually a question for Andrea. This is Aldrin Wolf. You there?
Yes, I'm coming.
Approaching the podium.
Okay. I know when we talked about this earlier, this project in total was under budget, correct?
It was.
It was. If we were to do not the private property ones, but the additional arboida and the additional deciduous trees, we'd still be under budget, correct?
Technically, yes, but that was last year's budget. It would be pulling from different funds this year. But yes, in the whole grand scheme of things.
It would be still under budget because I'd like to do whatever they proposed in here, as long as we stay under what the original budget was. Now, as far as the ones on private property, that's between what the property owner wants to spend and what the, you know, the city's contribution would be up to. I'm fine with that. But I would like to really, you know, I don't want to spend every last dime of it, but if it's within the budget that we had, let's add the extra trees now and get the biggest bang for buck we can out of there before prices go up on anything, or, you know, we just constantly keep beating on this. I would like to do as good a job as we can, and if this is what we're recommending, let's just do it. That's, that's my feeling on this. Thank you.
And I would like to add, I realize as I sat back down, Dan Chantet actually came out and met with one of the first residents and talked with a couple others that came up, so thank you for joining us.
And a resident from another town who is not going to be running for office after a viewing. He said, this is what you do for a living? No, no, thank you. So thank you. Thank you for that.
Yeah, I concur with Alan on this. Everybody knows me, I don't want to spend a lot of money, but it's the, it's the right thing to do. And I know that, sure, we could wait on some of the deciduous trees, but I've lost two big oaks in my backyard in the past couple of years, and I notice it. And it, those are 80-foot trees. They're not coming back in my lifetime if I plant it now. Every year you wait to plant something is just a detriment over time. And trees are such a valuable resource that we took out a lot of trees to do this. We had to do it. I agree that we had to do it. It was the right thing to do, but now let's do the right thing again and fix this.
Evy?
I had a question and a comment. I'm in agreement as well about spending the extra money. Thank you both, and Dan, for, for doing this exercise, too, and for meeting with residents. I really appreciate, appreciate that effort. My, yeah, my fear with the, my fear anytime I see one species of trees go in anywhere, is that like another Dutch elm or Emerald Ash Bore, whatever the arboidae version of that is going to come and wipe out all those trees someday. So I always appreciate being able to mix in multiple species. There was a comment made by one of the residents in the, in the write-up, Mr. Emerson on Astro Court about the berm and what was planted on that berm. What, what is the, what is planted along that berm there? He had requested native plants, but I would assume something is on there.
The evergreens planted on the top of this berm. Those are the green giants. So those are species of arboida. Oh, right down...
It planted on the hill itself.
Mr. Emerson lives right here.
Okay. So the, the perennials that were planted is the prairie out there. They're a native prairie. They will look very similar to what is on the... The berm itself, that runs along many residents' backyards where the arborvitae are planted, has turf grass around it. And the reason being is that as the perennials in the basin and on the hill back here, as they mature, part of the maintenance is doing a controlled burn. And evergreens don't fare well with fire, so we want to make sure there's a good buffer there. So everything on top of the berm right around the evergreens is just traditional turf. The rest of it will be a mix of native grasses and perennial wildflowers.
And that'll take a couple of years to really look amazing, but it's coming, yeah.
Yes, yeah, the seeded plants follow something called like a sleep creep leap, where the first year they're working on their roots. Most of what you're seeing is a erosion control cover crop and weeds, for lack of a better term. The second year, you will start to see them starting to pop up. And then typically by the third year, they've reached full maturity, and after that, they just continue to thrive. As they go, they will typically choke out the noxious weeds as they go, and controlled burns really help to manage that as well.
And H.R. Green has designed a sign that we can put over there to educate people in the area about the sleep creep and leap. And so we have plans to install those signs over there to let them know that the way it looks right now, wait a couple of years, it's really going to look amazing.
I do have a question because as I can recall, this level of engagement with residents for a project like this, I don't recall ever doing anything quite like this. This was kind of out-of-the-box thinking for the city. Do you get asked to do this kind of engagement often?
Not frequently, I would say.
Because this is something for committee to discuss, maybe not tonight, but this was a very big impact to a very visible area, and it made sense to provide this as a cure. It's possible that the committee might want to entertain this in the future, that if we do come in under budget and there are going to be opportunities for additional trees, do we have that as a philosophical tool to do? Just because I'm curious, how did it feel going out there? Because it was interesting to see you guys in your element. I was trying to stand back and watch as best as I could.
I liked it. I understand a lot of the residents, it is a shock. I'm not going to deny that. It's definitely different, and I don't mind hearing people's concerns with this type of thing. I mean, I'm sure if it were in my backyard, I would also be, you know, rather upset about it. But the city did go out of their way to help with the restoration, keeping all these things in mind. I mean, all these trees are specifically chosen to get that screening back as quick as possible. So.
It was a pleasure to watch. And the only reason I ask is, you might put a bookmark in it because I might need you again for another project at the other side of town. So if you enjoy doing it, there might be another chance for it. So thank you for the input. I appreciate that. Anyone else? I would entertain.
Laura, do you want to read the comment from the resident or?
No, I provided it to them earlier. Thank you.
We don't have action unless you have them.
Discussion and direction.
I'll make direction if somebody will join me to have staff do the proposal as presented by H.R. Green with, you know, the additional trees and arborvitae, both.
Second.
Motion on the second. Any additional discussion? Clerk, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Yazzy?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Jerome? Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado? Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
And Solva?
Aye.
Motion carried 12 to 0.
Great, thank you. I'm sorry, I cut you off. I cut you off.
Oh, I was just going to agree that more trees are good.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number seven. It's a discussion regarding the North River Street one-way conversion. Aaron R.
Oh, sorry.
No, it's okay. We'll try again.
Two weeks ago, actually today, we met out on North River Street. Council members were there, business owners were there, representatives from Main Street We had quite a group to talk about options while this street is converted to one-way southbound and how it's going to be handled. Just an update on the construction project itself. As Laura indicated in her weekly update, IDOT has now issued the official permit for construction of the work at Wilson Street. That permit was issued late last week, and IDOT, Rahat informed me this morning that our contractor has made a submittal to IDOT traffic signals. So IDOT traffic signals will have to review all the catalog cuts and all the information, and then they'll have to give us their permission to approve. So there's no shortage of bureaucracy and approvals at IDOT. So we're waiting for that now. That's the next step in the process. In the meantime, our contractor continues to move forward. We are waiting for a solid schedule from them, but they know that our goal is to get the construction work done by Memorial Day. So we met two weeks ago out there to provide that update, but also then to talk about how this road will be treated as it's converted to a one-way southbound. And that's better now that we get rid of the barricades. We talked about a number of different options that day, and we also talked about the importance of fire and public works need to get into what I call the Harris's parking lot down here, this parking lot, as well as the Newspaper Boy Alley further to the south. And we actually had a fire truck come out that day. And in order to get into both of those right-hand turns, the large trucks actually need to approach from the far-left side of the street or the northbound side of the street in order to be able to swing the curve and into the drives. And so last week, two weeks ago, we were talking about, you know, benches and planters to define that 15-foot open space on the left-hand side or on what is currently the northbound lane. But then as we've talked about it from a staff perspective since then, and we're just going to throw it out as an option, what if we simply, and I'll go back to the direction I was in, because it's a little bit easier to talk about it from farther away. What if we simply put the planters or benches or something in this area? So I'm right at the southeast corner of State and River, channelizing traffic, so we're still in the southbound lane, only one lane. And then south of that, not make any revisions and basically leave it completely open as the Wounded Fizz today. That will give us flexibility for managing our vehicles. It will also provide the businesses in the area much more flexibility so they don't have, you know, planters or benches out in the middle of the road. And it'll also give the farmers market the same flexibility that exists today so that the farmers market continue with their layout. So we're working on that. Again, I think we're still several weeks away yet before the southbound will be implemented because the construction will need to happen when that occurs. But that is kind of a summary of the meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago. So we throw that out and open it up to the public too for any comments on the idea of just providing direction to motorists at the southeast corner and that being the only location and going southward, not really making any changes to the road as it exists. I don't know if there's any more comments.
So Gary, by the parking garage area where you pointed out, what furniture are you talking about there? What benches, moving other benches to that?
Yeah, benches or planters from elsewhere to that location, just to kind of create this bump out. We have, if you recall, we have planters and benches from over here as well, although they're not, yeah, these right here. We could create, because this stands on its own, we could create a new plaza area here and then take these items and move those over there so that they match everything else on North River Street. You know, that's just one idea.
Or of a buffer to bring it down to a one-lane kind of.
Yeah, all it is is so that if I'm heading southbound, you know, I'm going to go right where that orange sign is, which is naturally where I want to go, and then I'm in the southbound only at that point.
And just to reiterate that we're trying things out, right? So we put it there and we see how that feels, if that feels like that's keeping people safe and yet, you know, making it easy to close off for events. And we're just going to be seeking the feedback of the people who are on the street, whether they're business owners, property owners, or their customers. And if things need to be changed after that, we can change them. We want to work toward getting it, you know, to a permanent arrangement. But in the meantime, we expect that we're going to have to move things.
And this is actually a really good representation if you just flip things. So where this is closed today, this would then be the open part, and this part that's open today would then be the closed part. So again, traffic will be able to enter in the traditional southbound lane, and then after that, there wouldn't be any other obstructions to them. And at the end, down here at Wilson Street, there'll be the berm and, or the berm, the new bump out that's going to be down there, the curbed bump out.
I think I will miss the presence of a few planters or benches down the road, something that just shrinks up that space a little bit and makes it a little less comfortable for drivers to go fast, you know, in those times that it is open to traffic that I do want it, I do want to encroach upon their space and their comfort a little bit so that they go slower. Not a lot, and obviously not encumbering a fire truck, but something.
That's, again, when we were in the field, we talked about starting traffic here, transitioning them over to the left-hand side by the time we got to the Harris's driveway there, keeping them on the left-hand side, and then they would transition back when they got down there. That was one of our thoughts. So to your point, we would be putting, you know, planters or whatnot kind of on a diagonal like that in order to channelize traffic and push it to the east. As Laura said, we can continue to play with this. The object is for us to eventually come up with a layout that everyone is comfortable with. And then as I said at the meeting two weeks ago, you know, that will become the new layout, just as this layout has been the layout since 2012 when the first street first opened. You know, we can go through an iterative process, but once we decide on the layout, that'll be the new layout.
Gary, to Abby's point too about slowing traffic, if there's too much space there on River Street and people realize it's a one-way, we want to prevent anybody even having the idea that they could do a U-turn on River Street.
Yeah, there'll be all the standard signage saying that, you know, it's a one-way roadway. So I will guarantee you that a certain property owners, well, actually several property owners probably will come down here because they have to access the alley, they have to access their own businesses, so.
And how will that impact the parking garage?
It won't.
So you'll go down, you'll go southbound on River Street and pull into the parking garage, so it'll become a one-way out?
So this, sorry, as I'm, oops. If I recall today, this is the in direction, correct? And isn't the out on the north end?
But we'll just keep it that way.
Yeah, there's no reason why we can't keep it that way. Yeah. Because it's southbound traffic, so people will be able to come right down here and turn left and go right straight into it. When it was under construction, if you recall, we actually turned the north end into a two-way, and that functioned fine. So if ultimately council wants to turn it into a two-way on the north end, they could. It would seem to function fine during construction. That's something we can address later with signage.
So this discussion about the street furniture layout is for when the road is open for And then I know that's on the agenda tonight is the street furniture layout, but are we also going to discuss the possibility of when and how often the street will be closed tonight?
Council can discuss what they would like. I think the direction was given at the meeting that if someone desires to close the road for whatever purpose, they would just have to submit a special events permit and then follow the special events process, and they could close the road. Now, is the whole point of going to southbound is, they're literally would just need to close the road almost like this. I mean, minus the yellow-orange sign here, but that's all they will need to do in the future is to pull the barricade across and the road will be closed.
Well, I would like to propose to council tonight the possibility that we make the decision that during the summer months, that the road is closed, especially over the weekends, and that we don't need to have anybody do a special event permit for that. We'll make that decision. I think regardless of which businesses end up on River Street over the years, this is an excellent part of our downtown, and it's a thriving area of our downtown, and I think we should help determine what we want this area to be like for our town, and that if we have it closed, let's say Thursday afternoon, Thursday evening to Sundays, where it can be then utilized for pedestrians and bikers and families to come down on the weekends and use that space. And I would like to see that happen.
Yeah, I second that. I think two things, I think we should arrange everything so it feels like a single lane so that it slows the traffic more to Abby's point. I think if we just said April whatever to November whatever, November 1st, April 15th to November 1st, I don't pick the dates, that it is closed Thursday noon to Sunday noon or 6:00 or something, pick a time, and that's just, that's policy. That's our ordinance in the area, that that's the way that road is treated.
Who would be opening the road on Sundays at noon or at 6:00? We don't have, we'd have to do a public works employee, that would be a call-out and a minimum two-hour.
Well, is it just, again, dragging that barricade? I drag that barricade every week for farmers market.
It's just somebody has to do it.
Somebody has to do it.
Could make it Monday morning.
Couldn't make it, yeah.
Monday morning, but you know, there's not going to be a lot of traffic Sunday night.
I bet it's moved by then anyway. Somebody has to get through there and does it.
The delivery drivers were moving it to deliver because we are still going, you're still going to have to allow that. I mean, is it as simple as a sign, like, what's that?
Let us make that choice.
What?
We don't want vendors to decide.
No, but what I'm, so here's what I wanted to finish saying is that it's as simple as like, you know, you have signs around schools that you can't go down and park in certain areas at certain times and stuff like that. Maybe not here. I haven't driven past a school in a while, but something that says no traffic Thursday, you know, no entry Thursday to whenever, and it's except for delivery vehicles.
But there are residents, that's their only access to their buildings, and they have parkings behind their buildings. So they actually, throughout this, when we have had the road closed, they have been allowed to have access to their alleys.
And that's been facilitated because there's been two lanes there, and the barricades are then staggered and traffic can go through. When we all. the barricades are then staggered and and traffic can go through. When we only have one lane, especially if we channelize into one lane, the barricade's going to have to physically remove from the road and physically put back every time someone wants to go through. So to answer your question, you cannot just put up a sign that says, don't go here on Thursdays, because the first person is just going to ignore the sign and drive right in. You're going to need the barricade to close the road.
I guess I'd just like to see options of how we make this work rather than how we don't make it work.
Well, I just explained how it could work. Alderman, you you put the barricade across where the 15 foot channelized road is, and that's it. I mean, that's, that's, you slide the barricade forward and you slide barricade off.
I'll tell you how it doesn't work. The orange cones that they put up near the Adler planetarium, I move those and drive through them all the time for romantic photographs. That's the kind of thing we're going to see. That's, that's what, that's what I was getting at.
And we can do it. I've always pushed back against Public Works doing it. But obviously, if city council wants us to to take on this task, you know, we would, we would take on the task ideally during working hours on Thursdays and ideally during working hours on Mondays.
Yeah, Thursday noon to Monday.
Nine AM or whatever.
Six AM, whenever you guys start. I mean, I know I start early, so.
I do, I do question what's going to happen on the weekends, as Laura just said, what's going to happen on the weekends when a delivery driver needs to get there or a resident needs to get there, and they pull the barricade off and they don't put it back? That happens a lot. Do we get called out then? I mean, I, because I'm, my overtime budget will take a hit if I gotta be called out every single time to put barricade back in.
I think this is an opportunity to track that and see if that happens. And then
It has happened. I'm just, I'm just saying in the past.
I know. But I think it's an opportunity for us to track it and see if it happens and then address it again. If it begins becoming an issue, then it's something then that we do have to address.
Fair enough.
I, is my opinion. So.
I am definitely in support of trying this out too and finding out exactly what the challenges are, how we can proactively work together to solve them. We heard from businesses on both sides of the coin throughout the past year, those that weren't necessarily in favor of having it closed, those that wanted it closed all the time. I feel like the happy medium is to close it Thursday at some point through Monday morning. And it really is a wonderful part of our town that we have available when it is closed.
I got a comment. Talon.
Gozer.
Um, I, I agree with that. I think, you know, I've always been opponent that as long as there's something going on down there and there's programming and people are using the street, we close it because it is such a unique feature to downtown. I really want it to be able to be utilized for everything it can be. And I think most of, in my mind, most of the businesses that utilize this over the time we've had it closed, have really worked hard to try to come up with programming for it. So I believe that's what they want to continue. I think that's what we should do. And I think we've monitored as far as the gate goes. And if that means that, you know, the businesses that are benefiting from the street being closed off, keep an eye on that. And, you know, the resident decides to leave and leaves the gate open, somebody goes down there and closes it. You know, they, they will benefit from that being closed when it needs to be closed. And I, you know, I really want to see us keep this, the synergy of what's been going on down there the past couple of years. We learned a lot during COVID that I think really helps these businesses out a lot. That's my two cents.
And how do we do this without making staff look, look, look like the bad cops?
No, we will channelize. Well, we will be the bad cops.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
To that, we will channelize the, the, the road. That's easy, because that's one of the plans we talked about when we were out there. And on Thursdays at noon, we'll, we can close it off. And on Monday mornings, first thing, we can open it up.
And I would even suggest we could even do later on Thursdays. There's probably still not much programming going on on Thursday at noon. So, you know, at the end of your staff stay, I think would be sufficient on a Thursday. And then
A Thursday afternoon.
Sometime Thursday afternoon. Just to continue for the other businesses like Katrina, I did talk to somebody on her staff when we were down on River Street. And she did indicate that most of their people who need a more accessible entrance do come earlier in the week, Monday through Thursdays, earlier in the mornings. So I'm hoping that this is, will work out for many businesses. And I agree with what Alan said about the synergy. I mean, we even have Geneva Winery showing up now on River Street because they noticed that that's a great location. And so hopefully, we'll get more and more businesses coming and filling up some of those empty locations.
The next two questions that are going to be asked are, what about picnic tables and service of alcohol?
We have a whole agenda tonight, so.
Well, I'm just saying, those are the questions that are going to come up.
I, I agree with you. That's why I asked the question about, about bad cop. Because if I recall the earlier discussions on the wound, or if it is supposed to be a piece of clay, we're supposed to be able to move this thing as, as the town needs, needs to move it. But at the same time, I don't want to get hit by a car. It is a shared space, but I, I would, I would feel responsible if someone gets, gets hurt here, if we are too lax in the discussions. I've been on, I've been on the fence of this. I, I agree with everything you said. Is there a way to do this barricade? So someone wants to move it, they really can't?
I don't think that's a good idea. We need, we need to be able to move it for
I'm almost honest.
For fire and ambulance down there. That's, if nothing else, that's the top, the most important thing.
Yeah, I think this, to me, was a true silver lining of the whole pandemic. We would not have realized the, what, what we had. Well, we knew what we had, but we weren't getting there because it had been sitting. And from through the pandemic, really opened the possibilities of what it could be. And I think exploring that, this, you know, maybe we're going to, we can pivot and decide, no, that didn't work. Let's try this and do it differently. But for now, I like that idea that you have that bump out there and then leave the rest the same. And then closing it for, you know, extended periods during the season so we can keep the momentum going. We, we, we drew tons of people into this town for that. And I had some great times out there myself. And so I fully support it.
Just to be clear, we're not going to the bump out and keep the rest the same. I think the consensus was to to create a, a channelized roadway through there.
Yes, relatively. Yeah.
Gary? Gary, I have one question. If we were to take the, the benches and the planters that are there now on the, the left hand side of that, we have to leave those over there so that the fire trucks can make a loop, correct?
On the left hand side, looking south. So I've been the east side of the street. The east side basically has to stay the way it is today. That's correct.
Because I, my, one of my thoughts was if you were to move those over six feet or something, would you be able to put the picnic tables behind them in a road between that and the parking garage to the east to at least provide some more seating out there that could be utilized, you know, throughout the week and on the weekends? But if the fire has to have that turning radius, I don't know that that's an option.
That's not an option. That's one of the things we looked at. So that's, that's where the granite planters, where the tree wells are between Public Works and the fire department, we need to get our trucks, you know, over on that side of the road. So losing six feet over there will not allow us to turn into the driveways.
Okay. You know, and that was one of the things that I knew that we were going to run into was, you know, without blocking the street off completely, and I mean, you'd still have to be able to move those picnic tables if you needed to get a fire truck in there anyway. You know, I think it's just incumbent on the businesses that are there, they've got seating out in front of their buildings. And, you know, if, this is a totally another discussion, if we have to change how we allow them to do that out in the street and, and make more room there, that's going to be on them. I just don't know that we can really rearrange that street and move the picnic tables out there like we have done in the past.
That's correct.
That's why I asked the question about picnic tables and liquor service. That'll be the next question that comes up.
We had discussed at the end of last season, when we talked about would the road be open or would the road be closed? And staff was directed to pursue the one way that, starting this year, that the business owners, if they wanted to expand their own outdoor seating, that we have a process for that. And there's, you know, several business owners throughout the downtown who have lease agreements for public space to use that as outdoor seating. But then those businesses would maintain the responsibility for cleaning those areas and for the liquor service within those spaces. But we would still put out a few public tables, but it wouldn't be quite to the same extent as it has been in past when the entire road was closed, because we will still have this channelized lane that will still allow people to travel all the way through that area, make that right hand turn onto Wilson.
I have a question about the channel. Oh, I'm sorry, Alan, if you weren't on.
And I think that that's the reality that we're at right now. And we haven't gotten to the decision where, you know, we say, okay, any alcohol service within these two blocks is okay. We have not made that decision. So that's not part of this discussion tonight. So I, I think that's a discussion for another day. But I think at this point, we have to go with the system that we have set up. And we have to get the one way, I think, implemented, be confident that we know that that works well, and then go to the next step if we decide to change anything else. That's my feeling.
Gary, can you clarify, when we had it closed completely for the past couple summers, we still needed a fire lane during those times. So what we're all used to on that road in terms of what this lane looks like, isn't going to change or expand now that we're going to the one way. So we're still going to have the same amount of space to work with in terms of tables and chairs and, and whatnot. It will just be in a different spot potentially. So.
Sorry, I thought the aerial photo would help to your point, but it really doesn't.
It's okay.
So really, I'm going to go over here. This will be a lot easier. Get me across from their driveway. All right. So that's the Harris's driveway. So really, from, from right where my mouse is, this will be like the 15 foot lane coming off. This is a permanent granite planter. So 15 feet roughly right here. And so from where my mouse is, we'll transition over to this side of the road as you go to the intersection. Does that make sense? So then by the time I get here, I'm all the way tied up against the granite, granite planters. And I stay up against the granite planters until we get past Newspaper Boy Alley, which is roughly, roughly here. So again, I'll be 15 feet over. So I'll be like roughly right here. I'll make people dizzy, but I'll turn around now. And then now I'm going to head back over this way. I'm going to head back to the staff side. So we will be moving these benches, these planters along the west side over. And, and then, then this will become the area, Alderman Beck, that you were just talking about, becomes the new, the new open area that'll be there permanently.
You don't need to go all the way to Wilson Street, right? Because you only need to get to Newsboy Alley. That's why we were able to have the permanent barricades.
Yeah, no, we can stop at any time you'd like. And that, that, that was why we even got to the concept of, what do we just do it at the corner and don't do any of this? So you're, I was only doing that because you had mentioned keeping channel, traffic channelized.
Sure, sure. Okay, yep. Yes, but not for a fire truck. Okay.
Okay. So we don't have to keep trail, traffic channelized, then we'd only have to make the bump out way back over here and then let, let them have the rest of it.
Right, 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 right.
That's a decision I would like tonight, though, because moving all these benches and tables is going to be a project. Benchers and planters is going to be a project. So if we're not going to do it just at the corner, that's fine. Just let me know and we'll make plans accordingly.
There's no textbook.
No, there's no textbook to this. Bill McGrath, when we first opened this, if you all recall, he felt we should be able to start off with no signage at all. And so when this road first started, there was not a single sign out here, with the exception of the stop.
And there were too many signs.
Well, yes. There's too many signs in the downtown anyways. People ignore them. But besides a stop sign, there was no other signs on this, on this road when this road first opened. And that didn't work well. So we ended up having to add signage.
There isn't a textbook, but there is a general school of thought that it's supposed to be a shared space. So if in the absence of a sign, you're supposed to be respectful as long as there are traffic calming things that are happening. Are we confident that the large planters and whatnot are enough to scare traffic to slow down enough that we don't need? Anything else?
I think the chicane nature of it too, by pushing them to the, to the east side and then back to the west side, that's going to naturally slow down traffic as well.
Okay. Yeah, I, I would vote that we channelize it. And then we use the space that's created where traffic isn't going to be to, you know, pepper in some, some of the picnic tables. I know we won't have as many as we had before, because the street's not closed. But that would be my vote, because it slows the traffic, which is key to keeping pedestrians safe when it's not closed. And then having those picnic tables in there is, it's a community benefit. So whoever happens to be opening down there. And I think once you do this, again, Tony mentioned it, that this is kind of the blessing in disguise. We, we learned a lot. And I don't think we necessarily knew that all of this was going to happen and be as successful as it was. And I don't want to kill that, now that we have something really nice and we have the ability to be unique in this that other communities don't have. So let's, let's go for it. And yes, to Adora on the street. So.
Yeah, I just want to share, get away from the signs for a minute. This particular block has one of the more intricate stories of American history that's in the area. And I've been contacted by the, like, Chicago Historical Society's asked me for details about what happened on this block many years ago. It was, I believe, August 15th of 1926. And Charles Lindbergh had just fallen the Spirit of St. Louis to Paris. And there was a, yeah, United States airplane builder, a would be one, that hired Charles Lindbergh to come back to the United States. They put his plane on a ship and brought it back. They got it here and they asked him to, paid him some money to fly the Spirit of St. Louis to every state in the 48 states that were then out there. And so one of the places he got assigned to when he came to Illinois was to fly over Mooseheart, where Mooseheart had about 2,000 students down at the school. So on this one afternoon, Charles Lindbergh was supposed to be flying over Mooseheart. So they took all the kids from Mooseheart and put them out on the field of what today would be Randall Road. And they're all standing there. And it kind of became a local joke after this happened, because they joked that Charles Lindbergh could find Paris, France in the dark of night, but he couldn't find 2,000 kids standing on Randall Road in Batavia in the bright sunny afternoon. And he didn't. And so he took the Spirit of St. Louis and he had a banner that he had been given, that he was supposed to drop for the kids at Mooseheart with his autograph on it. So they fly, he flies the Spirit of St. Louis up and he gets up to Wilson Street, or I guess it was Main Street. And he flew in to Batavia and started flying around the downtown area. And he flew over Batavia Avenue, Wilson, and there were two schools sitting there, the high school and the McLean School. But it was August 15th and school wasn't open, so there weren't any kids around. So then he decided he'd fly the Spirit of St. Louis right down the top of Wilson Street. And he got down to River, and there was some people down there because that was a kind of a commercial area. So supposedly, he went up and took the Spirit of St. Louis and went up to about Franklin or Spring and came back down. And he flew down River Street and he looked around and he came back and he flew it around a couple times this block. And then suddenly outside the airplane comes this little parachute with this banner on it. I have a copy of it up in my office, and it lands there. And, you know, of all the things that happened in Batavia that have a great history, I've had several calls now from other people who are working on history books on the Chicagoland area. And this is a story everybody wants. And so we've gotten a grant, as you know, from the Dunham Foundation to put a history tour thing up in Batavia. And we're writing a sign about this. It'll be probably down on the corner at Wilson and River, that'll tell the story of Lindbergh being there in 1926, dropping his banner. And so it's a very interesting story. There's a lot of people, I will tell you, that once we get this up, we'll have some visitors come into Batavia to see that banner. And then they'll probably maybe want to go on River Street and have something to eat. But I, I think we're all kind of coming together here on the rough edges of this thing, because this really is a very intricate, popular place in the history of this town to have that incident happen in our community. So I just wanted to share that with you tonight, because I think it speaks well about, you know, the funny things that have happened in Batavia. And we get all these signs up. We got about 10 of them now in the development, the rewarding's been done and everything else. There's going to be a lot of people who are going to be very interested in some of the stuff that happened here. I mean, really, significant I mean, really significant stuff. And we've got a couple more over on the east side that Laura and I were just talking this afternoon that we probably are going to try to get up that will add to the interest in this general area. So we're going to have some very famous things happening in that area that people are going to go, oh, I remember hearing about this or reading about this or that. And we're going to be able to tell those stories, and River Street's going to be kind of a centerpiece of that area. So more power to us.
Second, Adora, not sure if that's going to be the, if we're going to continue on that conversation tonight or if we're going to put that to another agenda item. But I would say with the placement of the tables and the placement of the lane, it might mean that somebody's, a business's patio isn't then contiguous. You know, it stretches across two other tables across, which would make me feel like if you can go across, then it's everywhere on the street then. So I think that doing what we've done the past couple of years has worked.
Yeah, oh, sorry. Again, I would just like to encourage that we have been doing this layout for the last three summers, two, I can't even remember now. And it's been wildly successful. I mean, we had the barriers on the north end to prevent traffic from driving down other than who needed to get down to their alleys to park for their residency or the delivery trucks. They were allowed to drive down the street as needed. We, very few complaints. There were, you know, complaints from some business owners about people not being able to get to their businesses. Well, that's why we're trying to listen to them also with the one-way being open Monday through most of Thursday. And we did not have issues with people other than once or twice that Gary said that the barriers were not put back, but people being able to get around when needed. And people seemed to be safe on the street. I don't think we heard any incidences of people being, having an incident between a car and a pedestrian on the street. And we actually have that happen on a lot of our other streets in town. So we should talk about slowing measures in the rest of our area and the city. But Laura, you said this at the top of this discussion. You know, this is flexible. We're going to learn from this. We're going to do some things this year that will change next year. We'll be like, that didn't work. So we're not asking to nail it all down tonight. We're not saying we're going to figure it all out. But I think we should be agile and flexible and excited about this and just view it as something that's just going to be really healthy for Batavia.
Point, what else do we have left to decide? We have the lighting?
Canine area lighting is actually underway. Our engineers came up with their first photometric plan for it. Right now, the structural engineers are looking at the plans for the foundations that were installed to see if we can reuse the same foundations. So canary lighting's underway. I don't know, have a timeframe yet, though, because we're still in the design phase, so.
The sound system as well, too, or?
No. No. Our sound system is where all the irrigation lines went into. If you recall, IDA wouldn't allow us to install a sound system. But we installed a sound system, and that is how we use the irrigation lights.
Direction, do you need?
Nothing, I'm good.
Okay. Answer, IDA number eight, then, a discussion regarding Prairie State.
This is two or three weeks in a row now where I haven't gotten my memo in on one page, so I'm slipping. This memo, it did go through some of the background information. I know that tonight's discussion was prompted, sorry, Laura.
That's all right, I got it.
Tonight's discussion was prompted, at least in part, by the recent announcement that Prairie State is continuing to express their interest in pursuing federal grant funding for carbon capture and storage project. Over the last week, in fact, just even today, subject matter hearings, I had given you the summary of those in Springfield. And then a couple of days ago, I had presented, provided counsel with several different energy-related news things related to Springfield and other parts of the country. So Prairie State is considering CCUS, carbon capture, in order to meet their emissions requirements that were imposed as part of SEJA in 2021. Again, a reminder that without carbon capture, Prairie State will be forced to reduce its generation output starting in 2038 per the SEJA regulations. And NIPA's bonds, as well as many of the other owners, extend beyond 2038. So at that point in time, we would be not getting generation, full generation, I should say, out of Prairie State and still having to pay on the full bonds. One of the things I did now include and in support of tonight's discussion, I went back to 2014. And that's my role, and that's kind of certainly one of my goals tonight, is to get a formal guidance on city council related to my role as Batavia's representative on the NIPA board. And I provided a summary of what was directed back in 2014 by both city council and our city attorney, and the context in which those decisions were made back then. Quite literally pitchforks and torches in the council chambers, talking about rate increases back in 2013 and 2014. We had police officers in here. I mean, it was, they were not pleasant meetings. Council decided at that point in time that, you know, electric rates were a top priority. And as my role in Batavia's representative on NIPA, you know, I was to act to minimize rates for members, including Batavia. And if you recall back then, our rates were higher than any of our neighbors. That's not the case anymore, luckily. And I shouldn't say luckily, I think it's through, really through the operation of Prairie State getting better, that NIPA's costs have continued to go down. But throughout the period from 2014 to the present, Prairie State has constructed numerous large-scale capital projects, and I list those in here. And all of those projects were approved by NIPA, really through my role as the Prairie State Management Committee representative, and subsequently approval of the annual budget at Prairie State. So just like us, they have capital projects in their annual budget, and then we subsequently approve the annual budget. What I'll do again tonight is to get direction from city council as to what my role should be going forward. I recognize that today's council is considerably different than the council that existed back in 2014. And I think, you know, I'm seeking guidance from a majority of the 14 of you to tell me, you know, what you want. I know there's only 12 tonight here, but hopefully there'll be enough consensus to give me direction. Finally, I did provide more information related to rates and costs. Again, NIPA's cost to its members, so NIPA's cost to Batavia for energy and capacity for 2023 is less than the costs that you can buy energy only out on the market right now. So NIPA is providing us with lower-cost energy and capacity. But then, of course, we're paying on bonds, which puts the overall rate higher because of the bond service. And then finally, I looked at Batavia's rates versus ComEd's rates in order to give you an idea as to how we compare with our surrounding investor-owned utility and the fact that we do have now a room in our rates. Should council, you know, want to support other initiatives, we actually could increase our residential rates and still be, you know, lower than some of our other neighbors. So that was my overall memo, and I'll open up to questions.
I have a question.
We're going to have a council discussion first before we open up to the public.
A couple questions and just comments in terms of Prairie State and carbon capture. So to correct me if I'm wrong, so we are under our contractual obligation to purchase what we purchase from NIPA until the bonds are paid off and Prairie State closes.
Yeah, the termination provision, again, is somewhat complicated. I've gone through it with council before, but in simple terms, as long as the plant keeps operating, the power sales agreement continues to go, even after the bonds are paid off. Hopefully that answered your question.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify, before I expand, I just always want to clarify that that assumption is still correct. So I know that we heard many concerns about carbon capture last, the last discussion. And one of my main concerns about it, in addition to those, is that if we invest a lot of money into Prairie State for carbon capture, then that will be used as leverage at the end when we are required right now by SEJA to close it down, that that will give them leverage to keep it open longer. And maybe, at that point, keeping it open and purchasing power from them is the right idea, but, or buying coal in general is a good idea at that point. But I just want that choice, as soon as we can get that choice, to get out of the contract that we're currently in. We can't do that if that plant is open, and I'm very concerned that investing in carbon capture will keep that plant open longer. And we will not be afforded that choice. In the event that we do not do that, and then in 2038, as you were indicating, that we cannot, we cannot meet the other objectives of SEJA, and they may not be able to generate as much, and we would have to purchase power elsewhere, we'd have to just switch from purchasing it here to purchasing it here, which there's so many unknowns in the next so many years, how much it'll be. But it might be an equal swap. We might get what we get from Prairie State, and NIPA might be able to get something. We might have a choice. We might have a diversified portfolio like we've wanted for so long. And I see that as being a better alternative than going down this very expensive, very costly, very experimental, and very unproven technology of carbon capture. And so I'm really glad that we were able to have this conversation. That was just my question to council, is if I'm alone in that, as soon as, as soon as our bonds are paid off and SEJA closes our plant, do we want that, do we want that chance? Do we want the plant to close so that we have the opportunity to get out of that contract as soon as possible, is my first question for discussion.
Can I just jump in, too? I want to make it very clear, and Prairie State has been very clear about this, that the owners cannot afford carbon capture. The owners have no interest in affording carbon capture. The owners have no interest in making this investment, as you said. The owners won't be making the investment. This would be a third-party company. So if a third-party company makes an investment, that doesn't influence the owner's decision whether they're going to stay open or not, because they're not putting their own money in it.
Right. But as owners, the conditions you laid out as the reasons that NIPA would oppose it, I agree with every single one. And I'd like to add to that or add just more conditions on, NIPA will not vote to support this because it won't, it won't be good for Batavia if it leaves the plant open longer.
I would agree with that. The, you know, the last we talked about this was, it's way too expensive. It's not something that needs to be, it was just way too expensive and experimental. And so I thought that issue was dead, and then all of a sudden, it's back now. And I've read up a little bit about this. You know, I have some serious concerns about the strategy, how, all of a sudden, it's becoming profitable to do this. So a third party would invest in this, to capture that carbon, store it, but also utilize it for profit and fracking and getting more fossil fuels out of the ground. I'm absolutely opposed to that. I just, I couldn't believe when I was reading this, how crazy is that? And they want to be, put pipelines around across the state, and Illinois is a target state for storing a lot of this carbon. That's insane in my eyes. And to your point, I agree 100% of you. Anything we support with Prairie State that keeps it open longer is going to continue to create these kind of opportunities to destroy our planet further.
It's federal subsidies that are making it competitive for developers, which is a total bummer on its own.
Just a bit, I want to be clear, though.
We're paying for it, no matter what.
Alderman, Malaya, your statement, I thought we talked about this and it was dead. This board does not have the authority to do that. I mean, this.
No, no, I mean, yeah, it wasn't us saying that. It was, we were told that.
Prairie State is very much still investigating.
They explored, Prairie State had explored doing carbon capture, and it was determined, oh, that's way too expensive. It was in the billions, and that's not something that the owners would want to invest in.
Let me be very clear. Prairie State is still exploring carbon capture. Prairie State is exploring federal grants.
But not as Prairie State doing it.
Oh, yes, no, it never has been as Prairie State doing it. Never has been. It's always been a third party being the owner and operator.
Does NIPA have a vote in supporting it or opposing it?
Ultimately, NIPA will have a vote in supporting or opposing whether the carbon capture project were to go forward, whether Prairie State were to partner with an owner or operator, yes.
So that's where, that's our only little piece of leverage is in our vote as NIPA.
Looking for the direction, that's the direction we want to give you.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we have 14 aldermen all saying the same thing. Because I will, and Alderman Beck's correct, in 2038, no one knows what the market's going to be. No one knows what the stock market's going to be one year from today. If we knew exactly what the stock market was going to be a year from today, we'd all be millionaires. No one's for sure going to know what the market's going to be in 2038. So what will happen in 2038 is half of Prairie State's generation will shut down. Our bond payments will still be there, and now we'll have to pay for makeup energy. And that's the same scenario we talked about during SEJA. There's an optimistic viewpoint that that makeup energy won't cost us anything more, or there's the other, under the extreme, if one's optimistic, the one pessimistic is we're going to have significant cost increases.
And one thing that hasn't been mentioned is the, and I know that the technology is, you know, not proven out, and it will have all of the environmental oversight that other industries do. But I think one of the reasons why the state of Illinois is pursuing the carbon capture and reuse is in order to allow the plant to remain open until the bonds are paid.
That's why Prairie State is pursuing it, not the state of Illinois.
It could bridge the gap between 2038 and 2042 for us.
Yes. And there is no intention to reuse in the state of Illinois. The studies that, like the University of Illinois, have performed are in the context of storage. There isn't, there isn't oil recovery in the state of Illinois. Oil recovery's a thing like in Texas, not here in Illinois. Here, it's just a storage.
Talk of pipelines to send it elsewhere.
Oh, yeah, you have to definitely have pipelines, correct.
And to send it elsewhere to be utilized.
I would like to make sure that NIPA votes against supporting any carbon capture. The stuff that I've read about eminent domain, taking farmland away from farmers in southern Illinois for the storage, and then the creation of a pipeline to ship it elsewhere, is very experimental in nature and carries a lot of risks with it. Carbon capture itself uses a ton of extra coal and water and isn't proven. So I would definitely like to see us, and also, it bridges the gap, but then gives Prairie State an excuse to stay open, which continues to just have us in that agreement for who knows how long.
I'm going to be contrarian here. Until we have enough power generation to replace it, which we don't, I can't say, yep, I want to close it because I don't want to be California and have rolling brownouts. We need to have something available to us that is going to replace that power. So I'm not thrilled about carbon capture and storage and reuse and all that stuff, but I also don't have, we don't have another solution right now, and there's not enough power generation to replace it. And that, I don't know how we figure that one out, but it's going to cost our residents a lot more in utility payments because we have to have an alternative while we're doing this. And I don't know what's going to happen in the next 15 years, but there better be something built that's going to be able to replace that.
I think in 25 years, we could probably find the generation and the capacity somewhere. Maybe it's another coal plant. I mean, worst-case scenario, there's another coal plant somewhere else. I mean, Prairie State is owned by people states away. We have to find coal and another, you know, a proven technology states away to give us our generating capacity that still gives us the option to diversify at that point because Prairie State will be closed. So we still have then the option if, and I would say when, the technology is fully there to support multiple different sources of energy. there to support multiple different sources of energy that we can at least participate. And it's 25 years, about 25 years.
15 years of 2038 when it's half power.
Math is hard. Thank you, 15 years.
And construction needs to be starting now and we don't have anything constructed to replace that. I mean, it just, it just doesn't exist right now.
But other generation, other sources of generation are, are being built. We, we are seeing that pop up all over the place. We're seeing other communities shift today to other sources.
So we need to plan, and I guess Gary, this is what NIPA I think needs to do is what is, what's our plan in 15 years? Where are we buying our power from in 15 years? Are we, is NIPA going to invest in something else? We, we have to figure that out. So I guess my expectation is that options are being delivered to us soon to say how we're going to, how we're going to be able to provide electricity.
It's either 15 years or when does CJ close it down? 42, 45?
45, I think.
45? So then do the math for me. How many more years is that?
That's 22 years.
Thank you.
Seven more.
Thank you. We still have to figure it out.
I, I just need direction. So the direction on that topic is clear. I understand if that's the majority of city council vote no on carbon capture. So that's one vote out of three on the NIPA board. But is that in the larger sense, in the fiduciary duty sense? I have approved x-ray sorter and deep well injection and the north portal, all in the context of making sure that Prairie State is efficient so that since 2015 to today, we haven't had a rate increase. What you've just said is it is more important on the environmental side to be sensitive to having Prairie State close as soon as we can get it closed. And we'll worry about the power at another point in time. And I think everyone needs to recognize that could be more expensive. We're witnessing it right now with ComEd. ComEd's rates have skyrocketed a hundred percent due to CJ.
Gary, question for you, maybe you can summarize it for us since you go to all the meetings and have, you know, firsthand knowledge of this. What do you think the pros and cons of a yes vote are versus the pros and cons of a no vote are as we sit here today and how it's going to affect us right now as opposed to something that is completely unknown in 15 years?
With regards to carbon capture, I'm, I'm probably more in council's camp than I am in any other camp because I don't want NIPA to take on any more risk. I don't want NIPA to take on any more costs. We've said from the beginning that we don't want NIPA to take on any more debt, that we want to be able to pay off the debt as soon as we can pay it off. So I have no problem with respect to the context of that specific topic, carbon capture, voting no. I probably have a larger, larger problem if we start kind of going in the context of let's close down Prairie State as quickly as we can. To Alderman Yur's point, and to everyone needs to understand some of the articles I sent you, our nation has no plan to go to wind and solar in the next 15 years. We would need to invest trillions of dollars in infrastructure improvements and technologies that don't exist yet, or they do exist in such small test sites that they're certainly not ready to roll out for our entire nation's grid. Wind and solar are intermittent sources. They're not baseload sources. Wind and solar cannot start a motor from scratch, whereas, you know, baseload sources can. Wind and solar don't have any storage and physics will tell you, and this goes back to my engineering and physics, physics will tell you, you can only jam so much energy into a cubic food, a cubic foot. That's physics. The laws of physics are not going to allow you to, so the scale of batteries is going to be huge if, if people think that we're going to get by on battery storage. So to that point, I would advise that I continue to make decisions in the context of NIPA and Prairie State the way I always have. I have no problem voting no on carbon capture because I've always been a skeptic and have never wanted carbon capture to cost NIPA or increase risks for NIPA.
I agree with that position, but I also agree, we want to make sure that we don't have these rate increases and when we don't know what's going to be happening in 15 years anyway. So that's what I'm concerned about as well. I'm not really all in thing of making sure that we just shut them down because I don't know what we're going to do if they're shut down. So I'm also agreeing with Alderman Yur on this point. I mean, you have to be practical here. So I do, I'm fine with a no vote on that, but big picture wise, I think we need to keep that in mind. Second down Prairie State would do. I think that's, the only thing you're asking about is whether you want a no vote on that?
No, that wasn't the only thing I was asking about. I'm actually asking about the other question more importantly, and that is the broad direction going forward.
Broad direction, my view, and my view on it is, is we, I agree with Alderman Yur here, we don't know what's going to happen and we can't have these rate increases like you just referenced, ComEd. I mean, look at what people are complaining about, about garbage stickers right now. It's $6 a month. I mean, so this is something where if they're that unhappy about garbage stickers, think about what they're going to be like if the rates increased by a hundred percent. So my view on the overall picture is we need to protect, protect our rates as much as we can at this point in time because I don't see any other alternative.
I think we can keep our rates in that area as low as you want to and burn as much coal cheaply as you want to, and you are not accounting for all of the other effects that we are going to be paying for. I mean, I have slides on slides about the effects of climate change and how the dry times are going to get drier and affect our food supply, how the wet times are going to get wetter and affect all of the homeowners that are already having problems with all of their flooding. You're going to see insurance rates go up and up and up for all, protecting all of our stuff that is going to be impacted by these extreme weather events. You are going, I will go on and on and I can go on and on about what it's going to cost us as the city of Batavia to continue to endure the negative effects of climate change. I know it's going to take trillions of dollars. I know battery storage isn't there. I know that we have to retrofit a hundred percent of our existing buildings in order to get them to an energy efficiency standpoint to make a dent in the fight against climate change. Like there are so many things we have to do and it's really easy to get overwhelmed and throw your hands up and go, then we can't do anything and I refuse to use my seat to ever do that and to ever say it costs too much, it will be too hard. It's the right thing to do. It's the only thing we can do if we really want this to be a city in the next 50 to 100 years. We can't take a short sighted view. It's going to be hard. It's going to be expensive. It's going to be hard and expensive whether we close Prairie State or not. It's going to be hard and expensive. We have to start making changes.
I agree with philosophical points here, but.
It's not philosophical. These are not philosophical. These are measured. This is science. Thank you. This is science.
See, you have to understand, there's going to be as many people who can cite articles and I understand that there's.
False, false. There is broad scientific consensus on this.
I understand that. This is still more of a situation where you have a actual thing that can happen to 26,000 residents versus a philosophical change that in terms of us keeping the rates the way they should be for our residents is what I'm more interested in in my seat at this point in time, until we have more definitive ways that we are going to be able to get power and then I'm all about, yeah, close it down, fine. Once there's a way that we can figure that out. Right now it's not out there in terms of this city, not the general population and, you know, all the articles that are out there. And I know you're shaking your head at me and that's fine. I have my position, you have yours on this.
One of the things I would like to point out is that in this case, Batavia is, I think, different than any other municipality in the state of Illinois. And that is because of our contract for more power than we use and that closing down that, that plant in 2038, the, the reduction, it will have a devastating effect on one city, Batavia. And so I get the point that we all need to do more and it's going to cost more and we all need to be making more investments in this, but we all need to be making more investments in it. And I don't think that it would be prudent for the city of Batavia to put itself in the position of having yet higher rates of electricity than all of the other communities that we are competing against for future business and residents. And, you know, putting ourselves in a very negative economic condition is also not going to be good for the future of the residents of Batavia.
What Alora said is more artful than what I was trying to get across.
Abby is much more well-versed than I am, but I just want to say, we already see residents and businesses putting up solar panels and taking, learning to take care of their own electric needs and energy needs. And even just this week, I heard another person inquiring about it and looking at companies. And so we're going to see that happen too over the next couple of decades. People moving that direction, relying less on city energy needs and being provided for them. So, and obviously we're not going to solve all of this tonight, but Abby is bringing up a good point. We need to continue thinking forward and not just sit back and be like, well, this decision was made for us years ago and we're stuck with it. Let's continue talking about how can we get out of this? And to Abby's point, she's not saying we're, she wants, she knows we're going to move away from coal in 15 years or 20 years. That's not what she's saying. I think she's just trying to discuss how can we get out of this contract that we are legally bound to for a hundred years or more and if Prairie State stays open a hundred years? We cannot diversify. We're just stuck. So she's not saying, let's move away from coal in 15 years. That's not what she's saying. But how can we get out of this contract? And the only way that's going to happen is if Prairie State closes.
The other thing that is on the horizon that will be a game changer for many communities is once there is a changeover to electric vehicles, a type two charger located in a home, my understanding is equivalent to four refrigerators or an additional air conditioner being, that's how much electricity a type two charger consumes. And so it will, on the one hand, be an increase in the amount of electric demand that we have from the population, but likewise, it's going to be a challenge from a distribution standpoint and what our infrastructure can now deliver to, based on the number of transformers that we have distributed in our community. So, so many things are, you know, it's a, this helps us on one side of things, but it's detrimental on the other, as you point out. It's complicated. So we, we need to continue to talk about it.
Yeah, maybe I can, so I can get some direction. Maybe I can help bridge the gap and please, I don't want to put words into anybody's mouth, but can everyone agree that at this point in time, we're bound by contracts? And most likely through the year 2038, actually through 2042 at a minimum, because we still have bonds sitting out there, Prairie State is still going to be our energy source because we have a contract. It would make sense to me that between now and that time, we operate Prairie State as efficiently as we can and as cost effectively as we can, so we can deliver low rates to residents. At the same time, we can always say no to decisions that would maybe extend the life of the plant, such as carbon capture. So we can say no to that. And again, that could be our one out of three votes at NIPA, which would represent council's wishes, but, but I would hope that council on the flip side of that also recognizes that we do have a contract and so let's run the contract as best we can run the contract and as most cost effectively and safely as we can, we can do it.
I agree with that.
And I can agree with that as long as we're not continuing to be making Prairie State an enabler to not, you know, to not explore other things if we, you know, yes, I want the contract that we have to be the most efficient and that we can and keep rates down. I understand your concern that 15 years, isn't that really that long a time? But if we, I don't think we should be supporting any ideas that would keep Prairie State open longer than it is because that would just further exacerbate the problem that we have now.
And I think that's consistent actually with the letter that council sent to legislators. Yeah. All right, that gives me direction because the day-to-day stuff, I'm going to continue to vote for things like the x-ray sorter, which helped to reduce waste at the plant and therefore, you know, decrease costs. Those are the things I'm going to keep voting for. CCUS, which would, would potentially add years to the plant if, if, you know, all the stars aligned, I can understand and we will vote no for that. So, yep. Thank you. That's good discussion and good direction.
We did have, there's a way, we did have. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening. I was pleased to see that Gary is asking city council two very important questions, whether city council wants him to continue making decisions that ensure that NIPA provides Batavia with safe, reliable and low-cost energy, and whether city council wants to prioritize other initiatives regarding its energy supply. However, in order to make informed decisions on these questions, city council needs additional information and tools. And what I'm going to say tonight, I hope, is going to address some of the questions that Mark Yur, Abby Beck and a few others you have expressed, as well as counter some of the negativities that have been expressed about our situation and the future of renewable energy sources. I believe these two questions and a host of other questions point to the fact that Batavia needs a plan, a roadmap that examines the factors that will impact electricity, supply, delivery, physical assets, obligations and costs in order to set out a pathway forward for the future. This plan would analyze and address the following issues. The current condition and capacity of Batavia's electric grid and when and how it will need to be expanded, upgraded and improved in order to meet system demands and growth. How transition from natural gas and gasoline to electricity as the primary source for energy for heating, cooking and transportation will be implemented? We don't know how long it's going to take, how quickly that transition can be moved along or how slowly it has to happen. What strategies will be used to minimize energy costs for customers, including when and how renewable energy sources are introduced into Batavia's electric grid? How energy efficiency policies and programs will be implemented? The environmental impacts of electricity supply and use? How Batavia is going to plan for the reduced generation output by Prairie State in 2038 and the closure of Prairie State in 2045? How the NIPA bond obligations will affect Batavia's energy options until 2042? Whether Batavia will be forced to incur additional bond indebtedness in order to meet its obligations under its contract with NIPA and NIPA's contract with Prairie State for the retirement costs related to Prairie State's closure, including the dismantling and removing of structures and equipment and the remediation, site restoration and monitoring of pollutants and hazardous waste there? And lastly, how all of these factors will impact Batavia's economy and how decisions can be made to optimize local economic benefits? There is much regret about the past decision to invest in Prairie State and frustration about the limited options that the Prairie State investment imposes on Batavia. I encourage the city council to engage outside consultants to develop a comprehensive plan, energy plan, so that in 20 years, we are not again shaking our heads in regret. The opportunity is. in 20 years, we are not again shaking our heads in regret. The opportunity is here for Batavia to choose between analyzing and exploring all energy options, and having the only option continue to be Prairie State. I please, I encourage you to engage a consultant. They are out there. And get a plan that looks at all of these things, instead of guessing how much this is going to cost us compared to what it would cost today, because we don't know. You don't have the tools to make that kind of a decision. So, thank you very much. I appreciate your time tonight.
Good idea.
Off directions to the staff. Okay, very good.
Gentleman with his hand raised in the last row. You have to come.
Microphone?
Yeah. It's because everything is recorded and the microphone is up there. Sorry.
In a contract, you're in a contract. If you've signed it for 100 years, you've got 100 years. If 19, if 2038 is when the contract, bonds come to an end, I feel it's like owning a car. The best thing for me is to pay off the dang car, now run it for five, 10 more years, because I don't have that extra cost on the side. If you do your maintenance, not like the school district, nothing deferred, you do it right now, and you keep it going, which is what Gary's looking at, you're doing your job. You're making that a fee viable operating power station for a long time. If the lifetime is 75 years, 50 years, you've done your job. And you get the benefit in the long run, not in the short run. You aren't going to see solar power for 50 years. You're not going to see wind power for 50 years. You only see coal fired, natural gas fired power as an economical method to put lights on and run things. Just an engineer speaking my mind.
I'm moving on then to item number nine. That's resolution 23 dash 64 dash R, Authorization for Execution of Notice of Intent to Award Phase 2A Improvement to Wastewater Treatment Plant for IHC Construction Company. So, the notice to, notice of intent to award is part of the IEP A low interest loan process. We did a similar notice of intent to award recently on the water side for our lead service, lead service abatement project. We did have one bid for our Phase 2A, our wastewater treatment plant project. That was from IHC, and their base bid was in the amount of $43,670,000. Council had previously approved an IEP A loan authorization. So, council has to approve a loan authorization ordinance, which basically says, this is how much money the city is going to seek from the IEP A. And that was in the amount of $38 million. So, obviously, there's a gap between the base bid and the amount that was anticipated to be borrowed from the IEP A. What's not in those numbers is approximately $5 million in engineering. So, the gap is larger than just those two numbers. Zach is here tonight. Zach is our wastewater superintendent. So, if anyone has projects or questions regarding the projects that we're doing and the need for them, Zach will be here to answer those questions. Scott Trotter is here tonight. He is our consulting engineer, and his firm is overseeing all the design process and the construction process and the EPA low interest loan process. I'm not going to walk through, because I have it in my memo. I don't need to read through this, but what we are doing with Phase 2A are improvements that solve end of life issues. We literally have gone to St. Charles to buy replacement parts from them in order to keep our UV system going. I mean, we're working on backup spare parts at this point. So, I cannot stress enough the need for this project to go forward. This project could wait in hopes that the market will get better. But again, first of all, it needs to happen. And second of all, the market's not getting better, especially post COVID. There's nothing, nothing in my public works world that the prices are going down on. That's just a fact, unfortunately. So, we, waiting is not going to get us cheaper prices. We had three deductive alternatives, or three things that we identified in the contract that could be eliminated. The first item was odor control at one of our processes, and we are not recommending elimination of that. The third item actually was the bike path rerouting, which I know we covered with city council at one point in time. We're going to quote unquote, permanently reroute the bike path up Palmarco until such time that we can get the bike path to go around on the riverside, when we get funding to do that. And so, we're not recommending eliminating that alternative, because we need the bike path. We need someplace for the bike path to go. And finally, there's deductive alternate number two. I had skipped over number two. And that's in the amount of $1,050,000. And we are, we're taking the large excess flow tank today. This is a tank that fills up in the extreme weather conditions. That tank is structurally deficient. I mean, it is basically deteriorated over its life, to a point where it doesn't make sense to rehab anymore. That tank's going to go away. We're going to build four smaller tanks, which are going to serve a dual function. They're going to become our new primary clarifiers, which separates liquids and solids. And those four tanks will also serve as the excess flow facility. And so, one of the alternates was to have clarifier equipment in all four tanks, or just in two of the tanks, because we only need clarifier equipment in two of the tanks in order to actually run our operations. So, by eliminating clarifier equipment from two of the tanks, we save a million dollars. That equipment can always be added at some point in the future, if we find a need for it. And again, we, so we are recommending that deduction. That's a million dollars off. So, again, as part of the EPA loan process, we're required to execute this notice of intent to award. We really need to move on this, because the EPA right now, everybody's project is over budget. So, the EPA right now doesn't have excess funds, unlike in years past. So, we really need to get our name in and on the list as a solid program going forward, in order to not risk losing the $38 million. Right now, we're looking at approximate total of $48 million. So, that is, that is these numbers I've gone over tonight, plus the engineering. We have a gap somewhere in the range of $10 million-ish. It's, it's, it's in that magnitude, just so everybody's aware of the general magnitude. We need to solve that gap. And what will happen or could happen is, we don't need that money on day one. We will get reimbursement proceeds as the project proceeds through the EPA. We basically are probably going to need that money 12 to 18 months from now. And at that point in time, we would have to bond for them. So, it's either revenue bonds or general obligation bonds, $10 million. And that will directly, and we don't have the numbers for you yet, but that's going to directly correspond to increases in sewer rates. I've shared this story with you 100 times. I'm a Fox Metro customer, and about five years ago, my rates just doubled by 200% overnight. I mean, literally, one bill to the next, our rates just doubled. And that was when Fox Metro had just finished, they just finished their expansion down there, but they were just starting it at that time. Luckily, Batavia has gone 8% rate increases since I think about 2013, with the exception of one year that we skipped. So, I don't anticipate that our rates will just double overnight, but our rates will see a significant increase in order to cover what would be in about, about a $10 million bond issuance next year. And we'll have to come back to you, obviously, with all those numbers. So, but I just wanted you to be generally aware of that tonight, as you consider the notice of intent to award. Not good news.
Really just no getting around this at all, because it's all needed for the wastewater treatment plant, right?
Unfortunately, the stuff that's all on this list is from the 1990 improvement or older.
You know, I just would like to add that the facilities we have down there right now are a regional model. And I get calls from other mayors. I've had several city councils want to go down and visit it, not ours, but to see this, because they, they see how it's being run and how well it's operating. And I don't want to name names, but some of our neighbors have been in here saying, well, we need to follow Batavia's lead and get our plan up to what this one can do, as far as its capturing of the solids and the water quality that's discharged by it, and all the other, the lack of smell and everything else that we're starting to accomplish down there. So, I would certainly encourage the council to approve nine, 10, and 11 here tonight, and get on with this, because I'd like to see us stay at the head of the pack on this one, because this is something that really could be very negative for our community, had we not done what we've done already. And we need to make, continue to make this quality. And we really have been blessed by engineers and designers of this, that really seemed to know what they were doing, and put us in the, in a place to do it. And we've been really blessed to have been able to hire some staff that we have down there now, that really understands what it's all about, and how to do it, and how to run it, and keep us really moving forward. So, if there's kind of a strange thing for a mayor to say, but I'm really proud of our sewer plant. I mean, it's, in the, in the words of all the things we have to do here, this sewer plant is a high profile, very positive thing for the community of Batavia to have at its access.
Looking for, for a motion then?
A motion to approve the resolution, which basically would authorize the mayor to execute the notice of intent to award. This would be then approved at the May 1st council meeting, and I think literally, May 1st or May 2nd goes straight to Springfield.
No moved.
Motion move second. Second. Motion on second. Any additional discussion? All right. Please go.
Who made the motion in second, please?
Malay made the motion.
Chantet second.
Thank you. Malay?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Back?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Zolfa?
Aye.
Who?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
And Ayazi?
Ayes.
Motion carry 12 to 0.
Thank you. How many rate studies should we, should we commission tonight then?
I'm sorry?
How many rate studies do we need to begin commissioning tonight?
Yeah, this, this will be, again, we will owe city council the information regarding the impacts to wastewater rates. We just, in the last four days, haven't had the ability to do that. But we certainly will be coming back to you to tell you what rate impacts this will be. Would council like this to be on the regular agenda, or just consent agenda? This is an interesting one, so I thought I'd ask.
I'd say it on the regular.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, I'm moving on to item number 10. That's resolution 23 dash 5 dash R. It's approval of task orders regarding the Carriage Crest Detention Basin. Maybe Andrew with us.
I follow Gary. I need to pull this thing down a bit. So, I have had we three break out all of the different steps of the process to move forward with the Carriage Crest Detention Basin. And since Gary kind of ripped the Bandit off of bonding, I'm just going to start with a Peggy request, based on the funding that we used for the Mahoney Creek Tributary Basin, and then some additional funding that was asked to be allocated for a different project. And the costs that we have currently, we're looking at all the ARPA funding being used, and a shortfall of $2.6 million, once we get from today till construction completed. So, she wanted to let us know that it'd only leave $135,000 per year for other stormwater projects until 2037, with the bonds that we did for the Ward 1 and Area 3 being paid off in '38. And then, the impact on a $300,000 house would be $16 per year for 20 years. She just wanted to kind of throw that out there, not saying that we're not going to move forward, obviously, but just to have that number in the back of your head, and how we're going to go about funding this. So, with that being said, as I mentioned, we had we three provide us a bunch of task orders. They revised the original contract to include the engineering for the pumping station option that we went back, and the cost went down from about $7 million to roughly three and a half. So, with that, we're also looking at exploring options for the electric to be buried in the route that we're going to the river, through the homestead, and then through some residences at, from Carriage Crest Park to the homestead. And then, the first order on that agenda is looking at the alternatives for the detention basin. I know it was a concern to see if we can do any native and natural planting. So, they have three to four options they're going to be looking at. And we would be back here in probably June, like, meeting with staff in May, and then having a discussion here to figure out how we're going to proceed moving forward, and which option we would be doing. And at that point of the process, then we can look at all the trees that are there. Scott Haynes has already gone out and taken a look at some of them, and identified some more desirable trees, and some of those do, so, back up to some of the residents that have already voiced their concern. So, again, with the design, it's too premature to say yay or nay on anything, but I know that does concern some of those that are present tonight. And once we get that, then we can kind of start moving a little bit at a faster pace, I would say, moving forward with the engineering, and getting all the permitting. I wish all the permitting was going to be fast, but I'm not going to kid anyone. We have IDOT and probably the DNR to deal with. So, we already have word from the Forest Preserve District. They're willing to work with us on easements and access. And so, the land acquisition as well. And all of those are wrapped up into this cost. And because we're planning on doing construction this year, and construction engineering, we have the funds in our budget. But just because this is kind of a big scope change and everything, we wanted to bring it back to council, obviously, to have you guys take a look at it, and to present it for any residents that have any questions and or concerns.
Mark, can I go first?
Yeah, I definitely, the trees, we just talked about trees, and we went back to a project that we took out a bunch of trees, and then didn't put enough back. I'm really concerned about that. And I know some residents are here about that tonight, that we really, whatever we can do to save, whatever's there. It probably needs some cleanup. I know we've talked about that. There's some undesirable stuff within those woods, but I don't know if we can just have a smaller, deeper pond and not affect that.
That's why I don't really want to go too deep into that tonight, just because we don't know what the design is. And based on those types of bottoms, it depends on how much soil needs to be excavated to have that, if that's even feasible, and then how deep and wide the space needs to go to get that amount of storage that we need. So, we're all very aware of this. Just kind of hearing the feedback from the Mahoney Creek Tributary, wanted to let residents know right off the bat that this is what's going to have to happen. We're cognizant of everybody's concern over that, trying to balance that. And that's why it'll be brought back before. And we can discuss that further at that time, because right now, it's just nothing definitive.
But walking into it with a, with a different mindset, having learned from, from the previous one. When you say sustainable trees, there's a big difference between thistle and the things that are growing in there versus things that could actually endanger the solutions too, right? right?
You mean like desirable?
Well, there's some types of trees that actually could endanger a solution if they're not taken out because the root systems that are there. So in some cases, we won't even have a choice. And again, that's very premature because we don't know what the design looks like, so.
I don't know what the condition of the trees are and all of that as well, so that will be looked at as we proceed when they do the survey. And like I said, Scott Haynes was out there kind of doing an initial look at it and we'll look at them further once we have some of those options in front of us.
What do you think, Abby?
Very excited to see what V3 comes up with. I've seen their very good work and I'm very hopeful.
Yeah, I guess I'm of the opinion we should go ahead and spend what we need to spend here to make everything right out there. Last week, I had the opportunity to go to the groundbreaking for the new accelerator and the governor, as I'm pulling in the Pine Street, the governor entourage comes down and rides right by this. And after we got inside and everything, he says to me, well, it looks pretty nice out here in Batavia when you drive into this place. He says, given the number of foreign visitors and that they're going to be wanting to come in here, he says, I appreciate that it doesn't look like it's a honky-tonk strip center out there. You've got some nice, nice planted stuff. So I got to tell you, the more things we can dance and dress up out there, the better off it is. So I don't see anything wrong with that. So I would encourage us to do what we need to do.
I know. Sir, any additional discussion from staff or counseling and other residents who wanted to address as well? I haven't opened up to some residents then, if that's okay? And I know that there were some who wanted to speak.
I'd like to start by thanking each and every one of you for your service in the council. Being an alderperson is not your full-time job, even though it frequently takes up the same amount of time. In each of the wards that you represent, there are a multitude of voices, some that have been heard and others that have not. Recognizing whose voice is not being heard and doing something about it is important. We come to you today as a collective voice in our neighborhood. My name is Alice and I live at 1050 Pontiac Drive. My property backs up to the wooded lot that is being referenced in the Carriage Crest Basin project. We bought this house because of the wooded lot. It provides shade, which provides temperature reduction, privacy, noise, reduction, light blockage, recreation, and an opportunity to be closer to nature in an urban area. Visit us in our neighborhood to see and hear what will we be losing firsthand so that you can see the children playing and using their imagination and building forts in the woods or riding their bikes down the winding dirt paths in the woods while others are taking a hike or exploring our unique wooded area. It serves a function to the neighborhood. I support a solution to the flooding problem and have been on board since day one, and I appreciate all the efforts that my neighbors have made who are here today, especially since I'm affected by the water. However, when I found out on February 28, along with everyone else here, that the proposal called for the trees from the wooded area to be clear cut, this was alarming. To me and to many of the folks here tonight, figuring out a solution to the flooding and keeping the woods are not mutually exclusive. I was ready to come here tonight to advocate for city council support in keeping our wooded lot. Before today, I spoke with a couple alderpeople and felt hopeful that the city would find a way to support our residents and come up with a solution that would leave as much of the wooded area as possible and replace what was lost. I thought my voice would be heard and taken into consideration. An alderperson referenced the recent Mahoney Creek project and told me that the residents over there were very happy with the outcome and with the landscaping replacements that were done and assured me that the city would see to it that we would receive similar support and have a happy outcome. I was assured that once the contract was signed, the city would work with the contractor to set up micro-solutions with the property owners that backed up to the wooded lot in a similar way that it was handled with Mahoney Creek, and I was hopeful. However, after going out to the Woodland Hills and speaking directly to the residents that live next to Mahoney Creek, I come to you today disappointed. What I heard from those residents who are here tonight was worse than I thought it could be. It was truly eye-opening to hear that the city of Batavia ignored their voices. The residents, these residents were in the exact situation that we are 14 months ago during the February 1, 2022 Committee of the Whole Meeting. They were here voicing their concerns virtually because of COVID. And what I witnessed is that it didn't matter how much these residents cared about losing their wooded area. Batavia did it anyway. There were certain trees that were marked to be saved and they were cut down anyway. The response was, it happens. And that was quoted from the residents that I spoke to who were happy to go on the record. We don't want the same thing to happen to us. These residents were concerned about their property values and Batavia did it anyway. The residents of Mahoney Creek were not happy with end result of the landscaping, and this was apparent during the ribbon cutting ceremony for this project where it was witnessed that there were signs that they were unhappy since they were unable to hear who was speaking during the ceremony due to the removal of the trees that provided that sound barrier. The big takeaway from today's HR Green presentation is that Batavia should do the landscaping right this time around so that we don't have to come back to fix it. This Mahoney Creek project is a great example of how Batavia did not grasp the opportunity to ensure the quality of life for the residents that live there from the beginning and what it can do to a neighborhood. I appreciate the mayor's support in financing this project, as he voiced earlier, because it is important. This is an important consideration. We want a native concept that needs to include the retention of trees. Do not overlook this. We want an opportunity to meet with staff and get an understanding of what trees can be saved to minimize the loss of foliage behind our properties. Preserve what we can and reforest what we can. The city needs to learn from its mistakes and city council needs to figure out how to get it done right. We need your help and we need your support. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name's John Clemens. Just to echo a lot of what Alice said, I live across the way from the forest and it's a really pretty prominent aspect of my property and the view that I see in sort of the area that's there. And I feel like, I read the brief, I read the attached document, and it looks like a lot of the steps are lined out. I mean, I think that none of the residents have a question about the engineering, right? Like, that needs to move forward, a solution to the water needs to be, needs to happen. Something needs to be done there and trees are going to be removed. That's, that's fine. Like, whatever is needed for the engineering, whatever, like you said, some trees have to be removed, the root structure affects engineering, great. I think a lot of what the community wants is to be more involved in the after effects. I noticed online that as part of the breakdown of tasks, there was a estimated calendar and timeline, and then there was meetings, right? Meetings with the V3 and discussions about what's going to happen visually afterwards, right? We're not engineers, they're the engineers, they're going to make it sure that it actually solves our water problem. We just want to be a little bit more involved in the discussion of what it's going to look like afterwards, what the options are for what can be put in, and obviously what could be, what could be maintained, right? It's great that it came out earlier that the previous project, there was some concern with how many trees were left, how many trees were removed, things like that. And again, like Alice said, you know, we want to be more cognizant and have a better method moving forward for addressing those issues and really just being like more back and forth with the community, right? We got together, a lot of people that aren't even here, you know, sort of voice their concerns through us, that we just want to be sort of more in the loop and more in communication with what it's going to look like afterwards. And then as the engineering, obviously the first step is getting the engineering done, right? Okay, how deep does the basin need to be? Where does it need to be? How much needs to be removed? How much needs to be cut away? But then after that part, let us know, okay? So we've got five feet, 10 feet, 15 feet here that doesn't need to be touched, like, we'd like to be, you know, maybe on site or something, you know, be dealt with, like, yeah, this is sort of the scope, this is the area, this is the space that's going to be blocked off, this is going to be removed. And I think that's, that's a lot of what our concerns is, is just being able to know and be, have a voice be heard with the contractor, with V3 so that we feel like there's some back and forth and we have a little bit of control and knowledge of what's going to be happening moving forward. So, that.
I'm going to make a comment. Rohat and I have had a meeting with V3 going over all these task orders and just talking about the native plant design as we're moving forward. And, you know, initial take was possibly it may just stay within the confines of the existing location. I don't have any exhibit unfortunately to show you, but there are trees on that, so it may have to be excavated to get our under drains in there and get all the stuff to the pump station. So it may not be as large as the entire city parcel. We may be able to keep some trees by the street. We are very aware and conscious of this. I will point out that this project has had more traction with the residents just due to the fact of the complexity of the project and the stop and go and look at this option, oh, this isn't going to work, and it's taken a lot longer, unfortunately. The Mahoney Creek project, I will say, was a difficult one to manage. It was a super quick design. It was at the beginning of COVID. I was the project manager and was in the office one day a week and then we were working remotely. So trying to get some of that communication out, you know, you might have one opportunity and you're trying to cram a bunch of things in there during your time when you had the opportunity. So I'm living and learning and I'm trying to make it better this time, but also we've just had a lot more time to reach out to residents as we're hitting the gas and then, holy cow, let's break, this isn't working or this is too much money, let's go back to the drawing board. For those of you sitting here that have had the water issues, I know you wish that we could have had the solution like in 2020, but hopefully what we're moving forward with will be the best option and both for the residents that have been affected and that live in that neighborhood as well as the city overall. So we are taking all of that into account, so. Anybody else?
I am at 1070 Pontiac, resident of the woods frequently. I am very excited to hear about everything that's happening as far as like, so it's very encouraging to hear all the work that's being done behind that. I just speak kind of to the retention of the woods because we bought that house because we want it to be in a mature neighborhood. We enjoyed that piece of that community, but we've got young kids, they're enjoying the woods now, so we do want to see if we can preserve as much as we can. I know that we do have fields like right next to it as part of the Geneva Park District. It'd be interesting to see, you know, if we do have to lose some woods in one area, can we build up in another district in some aspect? We just want to make sure that our voice is heard, we're part of those conversations as we can and not have to do like a follow-up or repeat that happened with Mahoney.
My name's Tom Trulis, I'm the original owner, we've been there 35 years. About 20 years ago, when we had the first 100-year flood, we had five feet of water in the basement. And I don't know how many times we flooded since, it's half a dozen, you know, and I get it from all directions because I'm right on the corner. So I get it from the south, I get it from Geneva, I get it from the west. And we, we just need your help. I mean, I'm in, I can't, I can't move if I wanted to because who's going to buy a house that floods every two years? So just want to keep it brief, but I and we need your help. And the priority should be to alleviate the flooding and try to preserve what we can and maybe even make it better. I don't know how much we really know until we know how big the basin needs to be and maybe no trees will be cut down, but we need to do something. I've been here and heard a lot of plans and heard a lot of promises. Again, 35 years, 35 years. It'd be nice if we didn't get any more water. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Melissa Ellis, I'm at 1050 Parkview. We bought our house because we were directly across the street from the woods. Of course, I want my neighbors flooding to stop, so I understand how important that is, but I would also like to make sure that the trees are, or as much of the trees are saved as can be.
As you're kind of doing the design, I'm sitting here thinking of woods and a pond and kids running around in it, and that makes me concerned. Like, is there, I mean, I know it's very early on in the design, but that is one thing that very much makes me nervous, is having a wood, having woods with a basin and kids running around. So as we consider designs, I don't know if there's some way that something can be put up to not, if trees are going to be around it, surrounding it.
Okay, and I know right now there's a top-of-the-berm basin, so there'll be a clear delineation and again, depending on the outcome, whether we decide dry or native, that may kind of...
As a parent, that makes me nervous because you can't see through those woods and who's running where.
Oh, just as far as like the slope going down. I don't know that it's going to be much different than what it is, but we will definitely, because there is a slope going in there right now. And coming off the road is pretty steep, speaking from experience going down there when I've been out there to see it pumping, so. Thank you.
New slopes for detention basins have a minimum or maximum slope that allows people to be able to get out of. So if there is a detention basin, it'll be designed so that it is able to be climbed out by children.
Thank you.
My name's Ryan Murphy, I'm at 1060 Pontiac Drive. We are right behind where the retention basin is and we have quite a lot of experience with the woods, as everyone here has been discussing and talking about over time. We've raised our four children in that house and we've also experienced quite our share of the flooding as well, including some significant foundation damage. So we are very experienced with that. As I mentioned, we've been in Batavia about 20 years and experienced that past flooding. So over time, we've spent probably tens of thousands of dollars uninsured, of course, because insurance will not cover that type of flooding, out of pocket, very familiar with it. And of course, we, our family and the rest of our neighbors and I think everyone in our subdivision, we can clearly say that we are all on board with the engineering project. We want to see this go through, we trust the science, we trust the engineering, it needs to go forward. It needs to go forward. That being said, obviously, I'm up here too because the trees affect us directly, the tree issue, the forestation issue as well. We're directly adjacent to the basin, as I've stated before, so this carries an additional concern for us, this project. And that concern chiefly is the maintenance, as much as practical from an engineering standpoint, of the forested landscape presently surrounding the basin site. As has been noted, the surrounding residents, including ourselves, have bought our homes largely in part because of the forested view. Our specific concerns include, obviously, quality of life that we, for everyone in the neighborhood, the park and the views, the neighborhood parks and beauties, we said, and of course, our home property values as well. A concern is that if you remove a forested feature in your neighborhood, that can adversely affect property values. And we all understand that dynamic when something like that happens. Additionally, there's been a sense or a seeing, we've been seeing rather, a net loss of nature in and around the area of useful trees, both from, say, the Mahoney Creek project as well as such projects as a commercial development along Randall Road behind Mill Street. That's a private development, but that was a large strand of trees that was taken out and changing the views for some of the folks along Mill in that area just to the south, excuse me, the northwest of the high school. Now, these trees provide value, no matter their species, because they are mature and they provide a canopy and things that are desirable from that standpoint. And I'd like to say, as a Tree City USA municipality, Batavia should ensure that forestation remains a priority, one which adds to the overall desirability of Batavia as a top-rated place to live. And I think we can all agree upon that. And of course, as has been noted by others, we are asking that the residents most affected by the landscape and the design aspects of the basin be actively involved with and/or consulted during the design process to best ensure that as much forest and desirable vegetation be maintained and improved. To use Alderman Beck's words, "It's the right thing to do." Now, I'm very confident this will be a win-win-win situation for everyone by solving the flooding problem, number one. Number two, maintaining and enhancing the beauty and functionality of the forested park landscape. And number three, protecting the value of our homes and our neighborhood. Let's make this a ribbon-cutting ceremony that everyone will truly celebrate. So I and the rest of us in our neighborhood look forward to working with the city and its contractor, V3, and I thank the committee for your time and attention.
PJ Fitzpatrick, 1075 Parkview Drive. I've lived at Parkview Drive for about 25 years now, and I've been before y'all several times since 2008 because we've experienced flooding in 2008, 2009, 2013, 2015, 2018, 19, and 20. So at those times, we were just urging, you know, the council to consider a solution. So to our delight, over the last five years or so, we've really seen a lot of momentum with this project moving forward to solve our drainage problems. You know, similar to what you might have experienced in the Mahoney Creek with Logan at HR Green and the city staff and the council members, you know, staff and council came to us and listened to understand really what the problem was. And over the last several years, we've really been able to come up with some different ideas. Sometimes the meetings, we didn't hear what we wanted, like Andrea said, you know, it was, we had to hear that we needed to stop and take a step back because the path we were going down either didn't make sense engineering-wise, constructibility-wise, or maybe just cost-wise. But every step of the way, over the last several years, we've always been, had the confidence that it is moving forward. And I think with this momentum, we need to continue it moving forward. And the ask is that we go ahead and we approve, that you all approve, the V3 contracts and work orders to move into the design so we can better understand what it's going to look like. Look to close the funding gap over the next several months before we have to go to construction so that primarily we solve the flooding problem and secondarily, build an improvement that's context-sensitive to the neighborhood around us. Thank you.
Luna, I live a few blocks from the woods. I am King County's certi, King County naturalist graduate. And I, of all the parks in my area, the woods is my favorite and my family's favorite, my dad's. It is unique compared to other places in the neighborhood for recreation. It has, it's interesting, has texture, has slopes, has interesting rocks, is different from a park that is very man-made. Lot of things for children to climb that are man-made. This is nature. And when I go into this very, very small area of woods, I kind of, my mind goes to, let's pretend that I live in nature. But then I come back very quickly to the concrete, asphalt, et cetera. This is very unique. It's a very small, small area. It's like a grain of sand in the world, but it's very meaningful to us. I remember a couple of years ago, walking with another lady like me, older, and we found underneath some bushes, some kids leave their sliding plastic thing there and we just take it and we start going down the slope because it's icy, because they had been sliding so much that it's very shiny and it's perfect to go really fast. It's so great. There are a lot of memories from there. I hope that we preserve as much as we can these gems of groups of trees, which are communities, one tree. We need to understand science. Science is learning about the communities of trees. We cannot just have one tree. There needs to be more than one tree of each kind. We don't understand yet, when we forest our cities, how we put one single tree isolated from others, they're families. They communicate with each other. Science is making us understand better that they're very wise, that they have their own intelligence. And each tree is very, very important. And we know more now with climate change, how important they are. And each tree that is there is probably giving a lot of function so that there is less flooding than what it could be if the woods weren't there. I'm very happy to see that we're having projects about the basin projects that you have in other parts of the city that are incorporating something so new, which is the prairie, which is, was here for many, many years after the last Ice Age, where the prairie state and we have a slice, 110 or 100 of 1% of the prairie is still remaining in Illinois, the prairie state. And we need the woods, which are part of our aquifers, our Fox River, all the areas of water, they need to be lined up with woods. And there is, there is water that goes by underneath in that wooded area. So we have a little bit of water, we have one slope, we have other slope, we have a lot of rocks. This is a very, it's an ecosystem. It's not just, we need to see what it is. These are beings. And so how can we use our forest as part of the solution to our increasing flooding problems because of climate change? How can we marry them, incorporate that and just elevate our thinking? We need experts to be part of the support to the body that represents us. Just like you said, we need people that know this. And how can we use the support of people that spend all their lives learning about how to make solutions in different parts of our spheres, human beings, interacting with other beings? Thank you.
I'm usually not one for prepared statements, but tonight I felt like we need to prepare a little bit. It's been really, this has been a great meeting tonight. I think McKinley Project tying into this conversation really worked out well. On that alone, before I read my statement, I want to say I think it's really a testament to the city to go back and say, you know what? We thought we did the right thing. There was an opportunity just to improve it and you did. You agreed tonight to do the right thing. That sounds a very strong message to me regarding the issues that we're working through here that what we end up here, hopefully it's the next best thing. If it's not, you're still open to listening and understanding if there's anything left open, an action item, a tree that maybe needs to come into play, one of those giant herbivores, which I thought were amazing. They grow at three feet a year. Wow. I might get some of those for my yard for my one neighbor. I won't say what neighbor it is, but anyway. Jason Lindstrom, 1101 Crestview Drive. I've been in Batavia now for 11 years, got some really deep roots here. Again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak here tonight. I've been here several times since 2017, talking about our stormwater retention basin problem in Crestview Meadows. You know, many of us in the neighborhood are grateful, beyond grateful. And I'm going to stop here for a minute. After our last meeting, Gary, if I may go kantik with you, I'll be honest with you, to hear the mayor talk and all of you talk last meeting about us getting so closer to this solution, I welled up. I'm a 6'3", 230-pound guy, I welled up and you know the moment. We were out here in this hallway, we've been at this for so long and we're getting so close. The emotion that's tied to our water issues, we live with it every time. And some of the recent meetings we've had in the neighborhood, it rained. How fitting, you know? So again, I thank you. But we're so grateful we're getting close to a fix here, you know? And those of us with issues with the water also acknowledge that it comes with an unwelcome change for some of our neighbors. I get that. We are thankful those neighbors are part of the conversation and sharing their concerns. Like, it is good to hear from the other side. You know, those of us that are, we want the water fixed, we acknowledge there's others that are impacted as well. You know, I also want to point out, I'm really thankful for the mayor, everybody here at the councils specifically, and this is like because they've been in the neighborhood and have been in our shoes, on the corners, talking, but you know, Dan Chanet, Abby Beck, Sari Vogelsinger, and Georgia Joss, you've been out there, you've seen us, you've been on the streets, you understand how the water flows, how it impacts us. You know, Gary, your whole team has been amazing. Rahat, Andrea, I mean, we've had so many conversations out, again, on the curb, you know, all through COVID in driveways, I mean socially spaced. I mean, Dan, I can see us like it was yesterday. Yeah. We met all through COVID. So and all the engineers that aren't here, all the public works folks, I mean, some of your guys were waving and saying good morning, especially on those days when they have to pump, which is an awful experience for the entire neighborhood, including my property. So I want to say thank you to everybody for everything that they've done up to this point, to truly understand the issue and have partnered with us to get us where we are today. So thank you. You know, and being a part of this process for the last six years has really reinforced with me the trust and respect for the ability of our local government, all of you here, to organize and do the right thing for the community you serve. And again, I want to thank you for that. It really goes a long way and it's not unnoticed. I'm confident that the city will follow through with their plan and provide us with the most feasible and cost-effective option for managing the stormwater and the aesthetics of the surrounding area. I couldn't, I'm more confident now watching how you responded to the McKinley Creek issue, Mahoney Creek, sorry, Mahoney Creek. Like, I, the trust and respect I have for what you do on a daily basis and at these meetings, I saw it firsthand tonight. I look forward to watching this project successfully implemented and in your future so we can stop living in fear every time it rains. And I want to thank you again.
I think staff has adequate direction on.
Well, I think you guys need to take the vote.
Right. Assuming that this passes, that you have adequate direction.
Is there any question? No. Yeah, right now, like I said, we're going to work on native and we already have money in the budget, so they've been kind of directed to move forward. We're looking at easements and routing and, as I said, we've already had meetings with electric as well for putting that underground, because it's going to be in the same area where we need to be. So we are slowly creeping along, but the first thing that will be coming back is the native plantings. And then once we have that decision from council and the committee, that we can kind of move forward on the rest of the engineering.
I asked the question before regarding this type of engagement. Being a reporter, I don't ever remember city councils ever discussing putting an engineer in front of a resident before. I'd never even heard of that before. And to see that Batavia was willing to do it was really cool, I guess, or enlightening. And to see that there's an opportunity here to provide some kind of data and cooperation. If we can figure out if that's going to be cost prohibitive on certain projects, if we can find a way for input, or if we can find that the cost is negligible, it seems like it's worth the investment. So I'm interested to hear from the rest of the group, otherwise I would encourage. Getting late.
And Dan, you can come and shadow us anytime. We all do go out in the field and talk to the residents on a.
This one's a little closer to my house. I might ride the scooter out there from now on, so. Any additional discussion from council? Otherwise, I would move that we send ordinance 21 dash, 23 dash 55 dash R, the task orders related to Carriage Creek.
Second.
Motion second, any additional discussion? Quick, please, call the roll.
Chanet?
Hi.
Soffa?
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
Maren?
Hi.
Lehman?
Hi.
Agassi?
Hi.
Malay?
Hi.
Uwer?
Hi.
Serone? Vogelsinger?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Masato? Beck?
Hi.
And Connolly?
Hi.
Motion carried 12 to 0.
Thank you very much. And certainly, Luna, you brought me back to 1986 at Shanahan Growth. It's a very small park, roughly the same size as this park here. My childhood would be different today if that park was gone, so I definitely remember. And now I know that it probably was a lady like you that moved my sled. Thank you. I'm moving on then to item number 11. That's ordinance 23 dash 16. It's an ordinance regarding issuance of $4 million in waterwork revenue bonds from IEP. Actually, we have Peggy on the line for that one.
Yes, good evening. This is to formalize the authorizing ordinance that you already passed earlier. This is just, makes it into a final bond ordinance. So it's just really a procedural item. You aren't approving any new debt with this ordinance.
Any discussion from council?
This is for the Let Service Line project, which all of this debt up to 3.9 million is going to be forgiven by the state of Illinois, making it essentially a grant.
There's no additional discussion then? I would, thank you, Peggy. I would move that we send ordinance 23 dash 16 for the issuance of bonds not to exceed 4 million for the waterworks revenue bonds with the IPA.
Second.
Second, any additional discussion? Roll call.
Chanet?
Hi.
Soffa?
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
Second, any additional discussion? Roll call.
Chanet.
Hi.
Zofa.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Maren.
Hi.
Lehman. Ayazi.
Hi.
Malay.
Hi.
Uwer.
Hi.
Serone. Vogelsinger.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Masato. Beck.
Hi.
And Connolly.
Hi.
Motion carry 12 to 0.
Thank you. Moving on to number 12, project status.
Tonight, I wanted to talk about the stickers that have been left by each of your stations today. And it is the BYOB sticker, which stands for Bring Your Own Bag. And these stickers are window clings that you can put wherever in your vehicle or on your back door as you're leaving to go shopping to remind yourself to bring your reusable bags with you on all of your shopping trips. And we're launching this campaign in anticipation of the start of the single-use bag fee that will begin on July 1st. It's a 10-cent fee that will be charged by retailers who are 5,000 square feet or more. And the 10 cents will be split, the retailer will be able to keep 4 cents of that, and then they will remit 6 cents of that to the city on a monthly basis. Again, we got about 18 retailers in the city of Batavia that this will apply to, but we thought it'd be a good idea in advance of that. Many of us have reusable bags. I myself may have 50, sitting in my home, sitting in my home. So what I need to do is take those bags and put them in my car, and then, as I walk into Jewel, bring those bags with me so that it is, this fee that is being implemented on July 1st is avoidable. You just need to bring your reusable bags with you. So we're excited to launch the campaign. It's got a fun little logo that looks, reminds me of the Hey Kool-Aid Man, and I'm sure I'm dating myself with that commercial. But I just wanted to make everybody aware of that campaign. You can learn more about this on the city's website and Facebook page. Other items that I just wanted to make you aware of. Max Weiss has begun employment as our new management analyst. He began on April 17th, and he's got a master's in public administration from the University of Illinois. He comes to us with previous experience working for Vernon Township, as well as the Illinois State Board of Education. He's got really strong research and communication skills, and he's already putting these to good use for us on many projects. So, and then, some other things. Drew Racco and Scott Buning will be attending a virtual national planning conference from April 26th to 28th. And we have received the plans for Dave's Hot Chicken, yet another excellent chicken restaurant. And our city of Batavia are becoming known for these chicken restaurants. And Pulte is submitting to have Phase 2 of the Winding Creek plat approved. The sales are really going very strong out there in that development with over 30 of the 163 home sites sold already. And in addition to that, community development is just really busy right now. I mean, it's heading into high season now, and they have over 20 different development petitions in various stages of zoning and development review, and several more expected to be submitted in the coming weeks. While it's typical in spring, we're really excited to see the continued excitement for bringing, whether they be residential or commercial or industrial projects to the city of Batavia. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Thank you. Moving on to, I'm 13, other, anyone from the committee?
Really quickly, we talked about it before with River Street. If someone will join me, I'd like to have a discussion about Adora on the next committee, the whole meeting.
Join you. You too.
I will join as well. I'd like that to be a separate one, and I think we should also have legal counsel here when we discuss that.
I also have another, and this is in response to some feedback and some questions and maybe some confusion or misinformation or just lack of information on the whole situation going on with stickers, which I mentioned earlier tonight. I just want to make this clear, and anybody here on council can correct me because I'm trying to put this out there so people can watch this, because I've had some people say they've watched, you know, replays. There was an RFP put out. The RFP did not necessarily have a sticker-based program in it. In response to the RFP, we had three people respond, Waste Management, Lakeshore, and Groot. Now, they were all specifically asked, would they offer City of Batavia paper tip program? They all said no. They were all specifically asked, would they offer Batavia sticker-based program? They all said no. So in terms of everybody who wants stickers, I get it. And I wouldn't have a problem if one of them said, you know what? Hey, we'll add in a sticker-based program into our total program that we're offering you right now. I'd have no problem with that. The problem is, they're not offering it. And then I've had also some feedback about the city of Geneva. My understanding is, the city of Geneva's current supplier, waste hauler, is Lakeshore. If Lakeshore offers the city of Geneva a sticker program, they've already told us they're not offering us a sticker program. So I don't know how that's going to affect us on May 1st anyway. So it's not like we would not be, we're not advocating for a sticker program or we're not taking into the residents' concerns about a sticker program. If there's something that doesn't exist, you just don't get it. What we need to do is, there is another RFP out currently now that I believe is another request, and this was sticker-based program. People have until, what date do they have to respond to?
May 1st.
May 1st. It's my understanding there's been no responses so far. Certainly, there's been no responses from Waste Management, Lakeshore, or Groot. So my, I just wanted to make sure that the constituents of all of our wards know that it's not like we're ignoring these things, but just because you want something doesn't mean it exists. And I strongly encourage us to move forward as quickly as possible once we hit May 1st, so that we do not have a situation where, guess what's going to happen? We're not going to have Groot, and we're not going to have Lakeshore because it's going to be too late for them to implement their programs, and we're going to end up with the one proposal left of the existing supplier, Waste Management, that I think everybody on council has already universally agreed, we don't want. Thank you.
Anyone else out there? I would. No?
Your patience. Excuse me. We're going to drop back to item 7, the River Street. They're not going to get a chance to speak on that. It'll be brief and just food for thought. Now, I came to the December meeting, and it was decided then, because there was no contract or no contractor yet for the work to be done, that River Street was going to be closed this season because of that. And then all of a sudden, now I hear it's going to be open as a one-way. From hearing the council themselves, so far in this past couple of years, it's been phenomenal, a great experiment. Your worry, your worry is that someone getting hurt. Because the confusion, when is it open, when is it not? The kids, you know, are playing, and then all of a sudden, it's too confusing to open and close it. I would beg that, if we do that experiment as a one-way this fall. Hold it off to this fall. Please close, close River Street for this summer season and close it to a one-way this fall over the winter. Just, let's get our toes wet before we go jump in the deep end. It's what I've got to say. Thank you.
Motion to return?
I'm moved.
Motion. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Good night, everybody.